...to order. We have a jam-packed agenda tonight, and it's going to be a pretty long meeting. So let's dive right in with item number one, an agenda check. I guess I have one question for the board. Our meeting is slated to go pretty late tonight, and there's one thing, item number 10, which is the update on the state legislative session. It's 20 minutes. We can keep that, or we can move it to next month's meeting if we want to shave 20 minutes off this meeting. I don't know how much it matters, but John?
I suppose leaving it in, and then if it is time, if Jason doesn't, if it's okay, we can just push it back to the next meeting, depending on how this goes, because we've got a lot of people signed up, but some people will show up, or they testify quicker, and we go through faster. Assuming that we came out now, we're going through.
Okay. Anything else, any other agenda check?
Sonia has her hand up.
Yeah, Sonia.
I can barely hear you through the computer. I don't know if others are having the same issues or not, but...
Me specifically, or everybody?
Everybody. I don't know if that's... Well, maybe that's just me. I don't know what's going on. Okay, I'll try to fix it in my...
All right. Okay. Moving on to item number two, items from board members and general manager. Just raise your hand if you want to go first, or I think it's call on people. I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands, so does anybody have any items they would like to... Yes, John Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank E-Web and the cooperation they've been giving about sorting department fish and wildlife and the salmon sorting function up at Leaver's Dam. I've been volunteering up there for a little bit, and although it's very boring, and there's sudden moments of excitement when the fish fly up there, I really appreciate the cooperation that we've been giving by changing the flow of what we did and things to get those major salmon up over that and separated from the hatchery fish. Thank you very much.
John Barowski?
Just a quick update, I did have an opportunity to testify during the public forum at the city council on the 28th, just to give them an update on our 40th Avenue water storage facility. Staff helped me out very much with that. Some data points to help with, and it's hard to squeeze into two and a half minutes, so you people who are testifying tonight, I empathize with you. Thanks.
Any other commissioners?
I would just jump in and say I know the project team for 40th Avenue has been fielding a lot of inquiries, and I appreciate all the effort that they're putting in to make sure people are getting timely responses, and I know others working on that as well. Anyway, my appreciation for the team fielding inquiries.
Sonia, anything from you? Frank?
No updates from me.
Okay, and none from me. Okay. So we're going to move on to the public inputs via telephone right now. When your name is called, remember to unmute your call. Press star six if you're calling from a landline, or simply use the unmute button if you're calling from your cellphone. Please state your name and optionally your address or ward, and speak clearly into the phone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Please keep track of time, and we will notify you when your time is almost up, and then when three minutes has elapsed. So there's a lot of people who are signed up to speak tonight, so we're going to stick with that three-minute timeline. So we will give you a 15-second warning, and then at three minutes, your testimony will end. After all testimony is heard, each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy, we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an E-Web staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. So the public testimony period for this meeting is now open. And the first three speakers that we have, we are going to start with Stephen Anderson, next we have Sandra Bishop, followed by Catherine Baker. Stephen Anderson, you are up.
Yes, I'm in the area of the 40th and Patterson Water Project. Somebody needs to mute their phone because there's some rustling going on that makes it hard to hear. I would like to begin by reading E-Web's mission statement, which is, "We believe it is important that we are active participants in our community, and protecting the environment is not only at the core of our mission as it relates to delivering clean drinking water and renewable power, it's also at the heart of what we value. For us caring about our community and protecting the environment go hand in hand," unquote, to which I would add, "except for the water project at 40th and Patterson." So here we sit in South Eugene, informed a year ago last March, E-Web would build one tank. Let me repeat, one tank. That's always been your plan. We had a simple request, build the one tank on Site 2 and save the big globe of heritage trees as long as possible. Town's pretty simple. They are important for carbon sequestration, habitat, cooling the neighborhood, and keeping windstorms from affecting all the trees below the hilltop to the east. And in fact, we stated we would support your plan wholeheartedly, but for that one sticking point. And all along the way, instead of working with us, E-Web has changed the justifications for not reversing the site plan, all of which are easily refuted if you allow other experts to weigh in and not just staff. In fact, one of your own contractors informed us that moving Tank 1 to Site 2 would not preclude blasting for another tank in a decade or so in the future, as was your original plan. But that is not what E-Web is telling everyone now. This is just one example of a flimsy justification for your change. So now you have outraged citizens ready to hold someone accountable for this coming debacle for South Eugene. Three and a half years of heavy construction minimum, instead of two. We did not ask for this situation. We would normally expect our commissioners to listen to our concerns and hold actual meetings. Obviously, we have not had public meetings during COVID, but there is no reason now not to hold a public meeting and give your constituents a chance to weigh in on your change of plan. E-Web had a plan years in the making, and it's been thrown out the window. One tank at 40th and Patterson, rebuild College Hill, rebuild Hawkins Heights, and then return to 40th and Patterson around the year 2030. Right now, it appears you believe that the community doesn't know what the truth is and what's in store, that's just fine. We in South Eugene will suffer until 2025 if you do not change direction. Do not do this to your community. We've never felt so mistreated by a public entity. Please stop this ill-considered change, and commissioners, walk this land with us and hear the other side of the story you've only heard once. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sandra Bishop, followed by Catherine Baker, followed by Susan Barnhart. I think Adam Spencer's going to be reading her testimony. So Sandra, you are up. Are you there, Sandra? All right, maybe we'll circle back to Sandra. And Catherine Baker, you are up. Catherine, are you there? I don't know if people are forgetting to unmute their call. You need to press star six if you're calling from a landline, or remember to press the unmute button on your phone. All right, we'll keep going down the list and see what's happening here. Susan Barnhart, I think Adam Spencer's going to read that.
President Schlossberg, I don't see Adam on the call. Are you there, Adam? If not, I can go ahead and read. Susan Barnhart, Ward 7, Whittaker neighborhood. Subject is beautiful land at 40th and Patterson. Comments, "I have already emailed the commissioners twice on this issue and would like this to be part of the public record. I am opposed to the plan to destroy the beautiful forest at 40th and Patterson. I agree it is important to have safe earthquake-proof reservoirs, but they need to be built on land that does not have a forest on it. We need our forests to sequester carbon due to the climate crisis, to protect species of animals and plants, and as a place for humans to take refuge. If those big old beautiful trees are cut down, many other trees in that neighborhood will be lost in the next windstorm. You need to hear more public, more from the public before a decision like this and explore all alternatives. Perhaps a land swap is possible, or just building one reservoir there on the western part of the land. Please consider your decision."
All right, thank you. Sandra Bishop, are you there? All right, we'll keep going down the list. Next up, we have Marilyn Block, followed by Joanne Corabio, followed by Haley K. Scott. And I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name, but Marilyn, you are up.
Okay, I'm Marilyn Block, and I live at 3930 Hilliard. I'm in Matt Keating's Ward, whatever that is. I was glad to hear, get a phone call from Laura Farthing, engineer on this project. And she said that as of March, you were only going to build one tank. And then got some input from some neighbors, and in April, you decided to build two tanks. And so it's fairly recent that this change has happened, and it seems reasonable and fair to involve more public input in this decision. And so I request a public meeting regarding this change in the plan before anything else happens. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Joan Corabio. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, followed by Haley K. Scott, followed by Martha Dickey.
Hi, yes, my name is Joanne Corabio. I live in Ward 3, and I just learned about this plan on June 3. While I'm not opposed to a reservoir plan, I'm strongly opposed to cutting the trees down that are existing there and not including them as infrastructure, which they are. They're infrastructure, like roads and sewers and everything else. They absorb radiation from the sun, they filter out pollution, they suck up stormwater, they store carbon, they spread moisture through their leaves, they nurture wildlife, and they improve people's mental and physical health. And scientists say they can lower urban temperatures up 10 degrees. It's getting hotter out there, and trees need to be seen as something that will help E-Web. It will help Eugene. It will help that neighborhood. It will help the planet. There must be a way to have a reservoir and keep those trees. They are functional. They've been quietly doing this job for years. Please don't consider them unimportant. We need to have more public input before the decision to build two reservoirs in this site is done. That's all I'm asking. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next up, we have Haley K. Scott, followed by Martha Dickey, followed by Stephen Goldman. Haley, are you there?
President Schlossberg, I haven't seen Haley join the meeting, nor Martha Dickey.
Then Stephen Goldman, you are up, followed by Jenna Eve Hartman, followed by Joseph Hubble.
Okay, I'm here. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Stephen Goldman. I live at 1495 West Hilliard Lane in the River Roke neighborhood. I just learned about this project a couple weeks ago from friends. From 1985 to 2007, I was the Natural Resources Program Manager for the California Tahoe Conservancy, which is a state of California agency charged with saving Lake Tahoe from environmental destruction. I served that board, appointed by the governor and other officials, for 22 years. First, I have to say that when I read the record of decision for the Patterson Hill water tank projects, I was greatly disturbed by the quality of your public process, which I believe is inadequate in several respects. I hope I have time to explain that in this brief comment period. Before I get into the details of my comments, I want to first urge the board to hold an in-person public hearing to allow everyone in this community who is interested, concerned, or has questions about this project to be heard, and to have all the questions and concerns responded to thoroughly, openly, and honestly. This has not happened. Shortly after I moved to Eugene in 2008, I became aware of how vulnerable our water system is because it relies on a single intake point on the McKenzie River. I'm sure you're well aware of how close the Holiday Farm fire came to E-Web's filtration facility there last September. I acknowledge that there is a need for additional reservoir storage in Eugene and replacement of College Hill and Hawkins Hill, which are leaking and earthquake unsafe. However, since building two new 7.5 million gallon tanks on the Patterson Hill will only provide one additional day of water supply for our community at its present rate of consumption, I believe that developing backup sources of water in case of an emergency is at least as critical a need, and probably a more critical need than building water tanks. I learned from your staff, which has been helpful, by the way, that building a filtration plant on the Willamette River is in consideration, but apparently is not a fast-track project with a completion date. I think that project needs to be fast-tracked. I also learned from your staff that you have developed five wells recently that are intended to serve the community in the event of a disruption of our water supply, but the community does not know where these wells are, and what happens if we have an earthquake that shuts off our power, breaks the water lines, and shuts off power to the internet and our phones and so forth? How are people going to know where to go to get this emergency water? No one I talked to has any idea that these exist.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Stephen. Your time is up.
Okay, I have many more comments. I'll email them to you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Jenna Eve Hartman, followed by Joseph Hubble, followed by Ralph McDonald.
Oh, Ralph.
I'm Jenna, and I am 12, about to turn 12 on the 16th. I feel like I should start off by saying that I think that is super unfair to everyone that, by putting two water tanks in this beautiful forest that is one of the only ones closest in the town that has neighborhoods surrounded by it, that it is super unfair to destroy and cut down all those trees with all the animal homes in them. The trees are super old, and these animals need those, especially when they're in town, because once we cut down those trees, they don't have any home. Every year, it keeps getting hotter in homes, which means more trees are burning down. So at some point, every tree is going to count. So I feel like we need these trees, especially since it is the only one, one of the only ones in town. And I think that it is very unfair that this was not put out to be in the public, and this was a decision made technically privately. And in spite of this, sometime last month, I was very disappointed. I feel like it might be a little fair to put one water tank and not cut down most of the forest, but putting two water tanks is very unfair. At some point, I want to be able to go there with my children in the future, and I want them to be able to go there with their children in the future.
Tell them you're done.
Yeah, I'm done.
Tell them you're done.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Joseph Hubble, followed by Ralph McDonald, followed by William O'Brien.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Hubble. I live a half a block away from Tugman Park, just down the street from the project. And until this last Sunday, I had not heard of this. Now granted, I'm not as well-connected as some to local matters, but you would think that being this close, I'm a bit of a stakeholder here, and that somehow, E-Web would have found a way to inform me, give me a chance to have some input here. I believe government should be more inclusive rather than exclusive, and the job that's been done so far is woefully poor. Now, back to the project itself. I'm not going to say whether it's good or bad, because I really don't know enough yet. I have not had a major chance to become informed. Luckily, I have some activist friends who are getting me informed. You know, I have questions right off the bat of, okay, so College Hill is in need of major, it's beyond repair. It needs to be torn down. Can we build another one there? I think that everybody that's spoken so far about the need for this urban forest has been spot-on. The need for more of that is apparent in what's going on around the world. And for us to not... Let me get to the point. I think that we need to use more of the collective minds of all the people here to come up with plans that are more outside of the box than just building a huge tower up there full of water. There must be alternatives that we can consider. I don't think that's the only idea that we can come up with. And so I would like you to consider that. You know, there's a beautiful piece of land up there, and there's a bit of a clearing up there. Why don't we have a meeting up there where it's at? And all the people who are concerned can come up and meet with our board members and talk more face-to-face. Anyway, that's the end of me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lebron Ralph McDonald, followed by William O'Brien, followed by Victor Odlebach.
President Schlossberg, I have not seen Ralph McDonald nor William O'Brien join the meeting as of yet.
Okay, so Victor Odlebach is up next, followed by Jonathan Pinkus, followed by Mark Robinowitz.
All right, I'm on a landline. This is Victor Odlebach. I hope everybody can hear me. Do I need to push star six again?
No, we can hear you.
And more than you, just, everybody can hear me. Okay, great. Well, thank you, President Schlossberg, for having this meeting. I want to quote Jason Simon next door. He said, "From an engineering standpoint, College Hill is actually a much better site to expand the water supply for the entire city of Eugene. It is much higher. It already has the old growth trees removed. There is enough room up there to put more water capacity than the 40th and Patterson site. The three existing reservoirs up there could be upgraded, each in sequence, with a minimal disruption to services." We do know how to build reservoirs. We redid Skinner's Butte Reservoir from 300,000 to 3 million gallons in 1926, 95 years ago. This is how we need to build. So what I propose is, E-Web says it's a publicly owned utility owned by us, yet we have never had the opportunity to vote directly on anything in the entire history of E-Web. We need to put a statement in the next bill, real simple. Do you support redoing the three College Hill water tanks in phases to make them earthquake-proof and provide water for Eugene for the next 100 years? You vote yes or no. Second question, do you support stopping any cutting of trees on the 40th Street and Patterson Street? This includes halting all work on any water towers there. You answer yes or no. You put it in with everybody's bill, paper, email, however they get it. E-Web must listen to the people and allow them to vote directly. This madness has got to stop. The board has four smart meters and 5G utility poles on us without ever getting our current agreement.
15 seconds.
We are asking for a truly democratic E-Web. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jonathan Pinkus, followed by Mark Rubinowitz, followed by Charlie Rojas.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
I heard some really great pieces of information and suggestions from the previous several speakers. The young person who spoke earlier referred to the importance of maintaining habitat, and the person who recently spoke on the engineering, really hit on something that's been on my mind, which is why not consolidate all of the storage in the replacement of the College Hill reservoir? That makes a tremendous amount of sense. This forest that's at the top of the hill and off of Patterson is one of the few remaining inside the city, and those who are attuned to the climate change that's happening and its impacts should know that all of our forests, especially close-in and urban areas, are really important for the maintenance of our climate, the quality of our air. And then there is the wildlife values, and you have trees there that are in excess of 15 feet in diameter, real old growth. You really need to take account of these things and rethink what you're doing. I appreciate you hearing my input. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mark Rubinowitz, followed by Charlie Rojas, followed by Samuel Key. Mark Rubinowitz, are you there? Mark Rubinowitz, are you there? All right, well, we'll move on to Charlie Rojas. Mark, we see that you're here, but you're unmuted. Remember to, um, unmute your cell phone or press star six. Who am I? Charlie Rojas, are you there? Uh, how about Dr. Samuel Schmiede? Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you, President Schlossberg and E-Web Board for giving me the opportunity. My name is Dr. Samuel Schmiede. I'm a native Eukanian who has lived through two and a half blocks, the forest above 40th Avenue. Played in those woods as a kid. I knew nothing of this massive project despite being a journalist and historian who follows such things. Not till I saw a flyer on my porch last week did I know anything about the biggest infrastructure project in decades for E-Web in this independent town. Almost no one I know in Eugene knows either. How could a project this huge in impact will not be properly announced in Eugene, Oregon of all places? I am an environmental historian who knows about the evolution of laws and social norms governing environmental land use in business in the U.S. And the lack of proper public notice and debate on something this major goes in spirit, if not the letter, of most land use and planning laws and social norms in the post-earth Day era. We know E-Web needs to expand storage facilities to capacity. But this inappropriate plan as we emerge from pandemic is not the way. Modern culture has been guided by the principles of transparency and public participation in land use and natural resource planning. If this plan goes forward, it epitomizes why those laws and norms changed in the 1960s and 70s. No proper public notice, no real debate, and inadequate leadership by city government on E-Web's biggest infrastructure project in many years. One that will hugely impact the hill nearby neighborhoods in South Eugene. This project will involve clearcutting removal of trees, including old conifers and oak, blasting and removal of rocky dirt for huge holes in the reservoirs for three to four years. Heavy truck haulings of free and construction vehicles to follow. This will affect the quality of life, sound, space, and business, ecology of the region, and property values. There are also kids returning from COVID-era remote learning in Central Butte Middle School and Edgewood Elementary School that I went to. To see one hill above their school being clear cut and hear construction noise echoing in the basement for years. My interest is not in Indian life, although some folks you live by will be impacted in extremes or a romantic voyage through my past. It is a democracy and fairness issue as well as an ecological one. This is a major disturbance, disturbance project and must be debated in the open. We really urge the E-Web Board to revisit this decision and hope in really truly open public meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Janelle South, followed by Hannah Thrift, followed by David Zupan.
Uh, good evening. This is Janelle and I am an elementary school teacher in this county. And first I want to start off by, can you hear me, by the way?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. I want to start off by reading, um, two of the seven pillars of Invison Eugene. Protect, restore, and enhance natural resources. And plan for climate change and energy uncertainty. And I also want to read the E-Web mission statement as described in its 2017 strategic plan. It states, "Our mission is to enhance our community's vitality by delivering drinking water and electric services consistent with the values of our customers, our owners. Our owners. We exist for the benefit of our local communities." Those are strong words and I'd like to see E-Web, uh, have integrity with those words. "I am opposed, as everyone else so far on this call, to taking out this well-established forest. Other alternatives need to be examined and given fair hearing. There needs to be, I'm requesting a public hearing as it's many. College Hill is the place to really be renewing, to restore what's going on in College Hill instead of taking out an elder community of trees. That is habitat for birds, like the affiliated woodpecker. Deer sleep there, deer give birth there, deer nurse there, they play there, they forage there. And beyond the animals that these trees give such a wonderful habitat to, um, it's children. We need a place for children to have a regular diet of nature in their life rather than Fortnite and Roblox. You need to get them off their screens. We need to have them in nature. We can't replace a community of elder trees with baby trees. Young trees can't give oxygen. They can't give nuts or seeds or shade or shelter to animals and insects and people. We need to not be thinking about the next 10 or 20 years. That's too short-sighted. We need to be thinking about 150 years from now. What will be the impact for future generations? Where is the environmental impact statement? How is this sustainable? Please consider what you're doing carefully. It's important. Thank you for listening to my words.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Hannah Thrift, followed by David Zupan.
Hello. Uh, I want to say that I oppose the plan to destroy the older part of the forest at 40th and Patterson to create the water tanks there. I just can't believe there are no alternative places to put the needed water tanks where forests have already, uh, been not, forests have already been turned into pavement. There's a whole city there where the forest has been turned into pavement. And I've heard a lot of people talking here about alternatives. Um, but before this meeting even started, I, I read an email given to my granddaughter that basically had all the reasons why it should happen and, uh, and, and disregarded the idea that there are any other viable options at all. And I really believe that as a human race, we need to find more creative ways to prioritize, uh, issues like whether we should be taking out more trees for anything. Especially our public representatives should have these priorities straight because without that, it will cause the demise of ourselves and we will be unsuccessful in changing the, changing the agreed-upon issues we have locally and worldwide. Our need for every tree to fight climate change is one of the most important issues of our time and I believe that as well as many others. Not a single person here so far has testified otherwise as far as wanting to see no public process and no other options considered at this point. Why is E-Web not the source for how we all know that destroying this forest is in progress? For a public utility, it seems like the public's opinion is being discarded. As usual, utilities listening because they have to, but without the intention to alter course on the very public you're supposed to serve. A very recent request to this meeting, this public utility should offer a public meeting at this point in, because of the obvious public interest in this proposed project and the lack of public inclusion, especially after the very recently revised plan. No reason is good enough to cut down trees in these times. And I was honestly offended when I read your response to my granddaughter about why our generation should have the right to decide, decide to destroy any old forest areas still left for our future generations. With all the great minds in our world, I believe we can come up with a better solution than this. And I would like to request the utility to really think twice before you believe that a very recently changed plan is the only plan that you can come up with. Because it doesn't sound like you have to really study this idea in a way that is prioritizing the future and more than just Eugene.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next we have David Zupan, and then we will try again for Sandra Bishop and, uh, Mark Rubinowitz. David, are you there?
President Schlossberg, I have not seen David Zupan join the call yet. Um, we do have, um, Sandra Bishop, Mark Rubinowitz, and Charlie Rojas on the line though.
All right, so we'll, we'll start with Sandra if you're there.
Hello, this is Sandra. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Sandra Bishop. I live in Ward Two. My comments are about the 40th and Patterson project. The abrupt decision on April 6th to double the size of a massive infrastructure project was a real breaking point for the neighborhood. I've never opposed building one reservoir for water storage on this site located to preserve the forested area. And there's plenty of room on this site to preserve the forested area in the extreme eastern edge of the property. Locate one 7.5 million gallon, very massive water storage tank a little bit to the west in what you're calling Site Two. And then that also, the third thing, is it preserves the oak, the oak habitat. This is not an either-or situation. But right now, what the issue is, that the doubling the size of an infrastructure project of this magnitude, that is not something that can be done overnight or should be done overnight without any public process. Since the decision on April 6th to build two reservoirs rather than the original one, there's been no opportunity for public participation of any kind. And now we're being told that on August 2nd, the logging begins. We need your help. You're our elected officials. We are in this together. We are not right. You are not wrong. We have a situation here where you're asking the neighborhood to endure an incredible change in one of the largest infrastructure projects that will be built in at least probably a decade around here. So it, now that COVID is over, all the public meetings up to this time have been very small and under COVID shutdown. We are now past that and there's time to have a public airing of this situation. You can hear from people testifying what they don't know about our water system. We need an additional reservoir. You can have that without pushing this through and destroying a forest. So it's possible, it's doable, it's the right thing. So you do not have to slow down the construction of one reservoir to have an open public process. So that's really what people are asking for. So please work with us. You know, allow yourself to relax. Don't keep yourself separated from your neighbors and family and friends who are asking you to reconsider building two up here. It's unconscionable. Go back to the original plan that's in all the planning documents to build one reservoir now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mark Rubinowitz, followed by Charlie Rojas. Mark, are you there? All right, um, Charlie Rojas, are you there?
Um, Mr. Rojas and Mr. Rubinowitz, it appears that you're on mute. Oh, Mr. Rojas, I see you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Um, I only received, um, notice of this project about a week or so ago. I didn't, or a little less than that. So you did a very poor job of notifying your over 200,000 customers that you were going to be doing this major project. My comments will be, uh, reflected of the email that was sent to me that was sort of a justification as to why this is being done. It was called an adjustment in plans, but in fact, this is a complete overhaul. You're doubling the scope and more than that, probably the cost of this project. I wouldn't call that an adjustment. That's an overhaul. Second, um, you claimed that it was vetted. Well, the vetting process can only be done by the public or should be done with the public. Because of the fact that there was so little understanding by the public if this was even occurring, we had no chance or opportunity to take a look at the numbers. And one of them being the fact that you're going to save 1.25 million dollars if we do this project based on a net present value. Net present values are a lot of hand-waving, wishful thinking, and estimations. Now, you may be right, you may be wrong, but that's up to us to decide and have a process to be able to do that. But I think the most problematic thing that I read was the fact that we're doing this project or you're attempting to do this project because of the fires that took place. So therefore, we need to speed this up. Well, the fires are out, but what you seem to have ignored is the fact that we've had one of the worst economic downturns in Oregon history, if not the worst. Many of your customers are basically facing eviction and a very hard time if, if they're going to be able to survive. To underscore this, Portland State University came out with a document, a monograph in, uh, February 9th about homelessness. At the time, this was, uh, data compiled by, uh, Portland State last year. And they said at the time, at least 200,000 households, 53% of them with children, are, have no chance or no, uh, capacity to pay future rent. Now, they admonished that it's going to get far worse because this was about seven, eight months ago. So you're talking about, what, 250,000? Who knows how many? But we can say this, there are hundreds of thousands, if not more, Oregonians and many of them here in Land County that are facing eviction and living on the street. These aren't going to be your typical homeless, you know, stereotypical. These are going to be working in middle-class families. And they are going to be your customers. And seemingly, they have been out of the, um, out of the loop of this whole discussion. So at this point in time, you're deciding to unilaterally increase the cost of this project when many of us are going to be facing eviction. And in fact, on July 31st, the CDC is going to lift their eviction moratoriums. So this is almost a done process. You only have a few days. And yet, at this point in time, you decided to go ahead and increase the cost of this project. And so I find this hard to believe that you would in fact not consider the pro, the public and include the public in this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Rubinowitz, are you there? And so remember to unmute. And is there anybody else in the lobby waiting?
I'm not seeing anyone in the lobby. Um, Mr. Rubinowitz, if you're calling from a landline, the code to unmute is star six. I'm not seeing any other phone numbers who haven't spoken other than Mr. Rubinowitz that are in the call. Those who signed up who I have not seen, please let us know if you're there and we're not able to see you. Catherine Baker, Martha Dickey, William O'Brien, Ralph McDonald, and David Zupan.
All right, well, it doesn't sound like any of the other folks are there. So, um, the public testimony period for this meeting is now closed. Um, at this time, commissioners are given the opportunity to comment if they choose. And, um, I don't know if anybody wants to raise their hand or I can just go around and call people? John Brown, how about I start with you?
Well, for those of you that are still with us that touched on this evening, thank you. Um, I, I understand the, the challenges of, of what you're facing and things, but we're, uh, we rely on engineers and, and input. There's a lot of technical issues that go into designing a reservoir. That's why E-Web bought this over 65, 70 years ago, knowing that it had the right elevation, it had the lines there to get the water to it and to get it, uh, distributed properly. Um, I wish we had an alternative, but I'm pretty sure we don't. Uh, the thing is that, uh, you know, people talk about one tank, they're okay with that, but you know, that's basalt and we have to blast to place even the first tank. And we can't build a tank and not blast to the second one. And to blast to the second one, we have to remove the trees where the second tank would go. So even if we built just one tank, we would still have to cut all the trees and blast because we can't build a tank and blast next to it because I'm sure that there would be a public outcry if we start setting off dynamite right next to a seven and a half million gallon tank. It would compromise the integrity of that tank. Um, we looked at this long and hard and, uh, we've done the best we can. We're under a time mandate by the Oregon Health Department to, uh, decommission College Hill. And we can't, uh, decommission it until we have someplace, something to replace it. And so we're in a little bit of a quandary here and, and time is an issue. And, uh, I understand your concerns, but we also understand our concerns and that's that we have to provide safe, reliable drinking water to over 200,000 people. to over 200,000 people. And this is a tough decision, but we'll move forward. Thank you.
All right. Anyone want to jump in next?
Oh, sure, I will. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for taking the time to testify. I wish it was in person. I think we're getting close to that. Hopefully, in the next month or two, we'll be able to have people and face-to-face. Mark Robinowitz, just so you know, your email did come through, so we'll be able to look at that and get your testimony from that. Anybody else who felt that they were rushed or didn't get all their points across, please feel free to email us. As Commissioner Brown said, this is a complicated issue. It's one that we've struggled with. We have, I personally have myself walked the property and gone up to community meetings at the property, face-to-face meetings that were facilitated by UW staffs with the neighborhood. You know, public outreach is a difficult thing, and it's even more difficult during COVID. I believe our staff did their best job to try and get the message out to people. If you feel that you didn't get the message, I apologize for that. But like I said, there was a robust effort to get this information out there. And we do our best to reach everybody, but you just can't until somebody knocks on your door and says, hey, they're putting a tank at the end of the street. Did you know about it? Well, I hope that you would. It's been a tough decision for me to make. You know, I'm new on the board as of January, so some of the background material on this I had to get brought up to speed on. But I feel comfortable moving forward with the decision. There are going to be trees that are going to be cut. There's going to be oak habitat that's going to be maintained and enhanced. Anytime we have a project of this size anywhere in the community, there's going to be impacts. So, just say you move it to College Hill, and the people who are at College Hills are going to be, come and testify in front of us. I understand that. I wouldn't want to have this right next to my house. But we moved through it for the betterment of the community. As far as, as, you know, being able to vote on this, you know, we are elected officials, and if you think we've done the wrong thing, we'll hear about it at the ballot next time. And I'm prepared to live with that decision going forward, and I will defend it. And if enough people feel that I made the wrong decision and want to run against me, I'm more than willing to do that. But I, again, I hear you guys, but we do need to move forward, and I feel comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I really appreciate all of the feedback. And, you know, even though it's hard to hear, as I think your intention is, it's valuable information for us. What I'm taking away primarily is that you felt like the public process has not been what you'd like it to be. I mean, I understand that, you know, you don't want the trees cut down. I don't want the trees cut down. I don't think any of us want the trees cut down. But I do believe that EWEB staff, in combination with a number of environmental groups and orders and such, have, and the survey to the neighbors throughout the last year and a half, they've done the best job that they can to minimize the amount of trees and to maximize the oak, saving the oak that has the highest environmental impact. And that, I think, is really what I've appreciated in the process from EWEB. Now, on the public process side, I encourage anybody who hasn't gone to the EWEB website to check out the, there's a list on here that says, "Previous updates and announcements about the College Hill site." And I look on there, and there's at least nine different emails that have gone out to neighbors. So, somehow, that isn't working. I mean, for me, I try to find solutions. How can we do this better? I'm not willing to go back on the decision we made right now, but I do feel like there was a robust process throughout. There was, there was emails that were put out. There were at least two public meetings that were held onsite at the College Hill site. We've had testimony, at least nine different public, nine different EWEB board meetings where we've had public testimony just like this. So, for me, I continue to wonder, you know, what else do people want? I know that staff have gone and reached out to the neighbors. We've reached out to the neighbors. I don't know how to reach out to people anymore. I wish that, you know, that we could have had some of these conversations before. I know that the COVID has really challenged, you know, some of the work here, so it's not in person. But that doesn't mean that this is, this is, this is still valuable. This is still a valuable information-sharing platform for us. And in some respects, people may be able to attend more because they can come and visit. Now, on the other side of it, I mean, I, I didn't personally think that we were going to have two tanks until I found out that we were going to have to blast the trees anyway. And then it was going to cost us more than a million more dollars to do it later. And that it was going to impact the neighbors even more because they were going to have to have, what, more than, it was like 1,000 more truckloads of dirt that were going to be hauled in and hauled back out to ready the site. It just didn't make sense to me. So, when the, when the second tank proposal was presented, and those were the additional impacts, it wasn't just the tree removal. I mean, I wanted to reduce the timing for the trees as well. When we found out we were going to have to remove them anyway, it felt like a done deal to me, honestly. I, I mean, we already had to remove them. And I appreciate, last point, I appreciate everybody's feedback about, you know, having to, or looking for other options. I can, I can guarantee other options were evaluated. You know, they have to have it at a certain height level. It has to have a certain capacity. That's not an easy thing to find in that region. So, again, I really appreciate everybody coming out. We have asked many of these questions. We're all volunteers. We don't get, you know, this is something that we do because we care about Eugene. We care about making the right decisions. It's something that keeps us up at night. And I hope that you respect that we have looked out as well for these absolute questions. So, thank you. I appreciate it. I'll be quiet now.
Thanks. I'll take just a quick minute and just want to say thank you to the folks who took the time out of your evenings tonight to share your thoughts and opinions with us. I also want to say thanks to John and John and Sonia for covering a lot of territory and addressing a lot of the issues that I think were raised tonight. There are unquestionably trade-offs and impacts from this project. Sonia suggested, I think, taking a look at the project list that are more helpful to see some of the real effort that's been done to try and minimize impacts and really weigh the trade-offs and provide the best project we can within the needs of our water system. I have a lot of trust in our staff team, who has done a tremendous amount of effort to do just that. They've managed to find a spot on this site where the impact is minimized to just 2.5 of the 10 acres of this property. And they're protecting really valuable oak habitat that is exceedingly rare. So, there's definitely a lot of thought about the ecological impacts on the site. Lastly, we've all asked staff to identify and take steps to reduce the very real impacts to neighbors in terms of noise and dust and truck traffic. And we're aware that it's going to be, it's going to be hard to be in that neighborhood and have that construction going on. But we are asking staff to do all they can to try and minimize those impacts. Thanks again for the input, and, and.
Thank you. I just want to echo what my fellow commissioners have said, and thank everybody for testifying tonight. And this is something that some people feel very passionately about, including us. I want to thank the staff for the great care that they've taken in coming up with this plan. I know that in addition to their expertise, they're also members of our community, and they do care about this site. I was chosen 70 years ago strategically for EWEB, and one of the reasons that there is a beautiful forest is that we haven't needed to use that site for this. But we do live in an urban area, and there is, there are trade-offs for major infrastructure projects. So, I'm confident in the plan that we've put forth. I feel that there are some strong plans in there to mitigate as much of the noise, costs, and ecological damage that will happen. And I support the 24% progress. All right. That was a very long public input section. And you want to say anything, Fran?
Sure. Thanks, President Schlossberg. For the record, people listening in audio, this is Frank Lawson, the general manager of EWEB. I think there are a number of trade-offs. The board spoke about that. I did want to mention to those who have talked about College Hill specifically and other sites, this is part of an overall plan that we have that addresses water quality and water reliability over a number of years. We will ultimately, in the next eight years or so, have two 7.5 million gallon tanks at East 40th, two new 7.5 million gallon tanks at Hawkins, and also at College Hill. Those are matched in elevation, specifically 607 feet above sea level. Those sites were chosen many years ago for that reason. We are also balancing the system for both resiliency as well as water quality. And having two, what, actually, 7.5 million gallons, while it seems like a lot, those are actually smaller than some of our existing larger reservoirs now, so that we have more flexibility for O and M and other maintenance costs going forward. And so, this is part of a larger plan. And I almost guarantee that if we did one tank now, waited a few years, and then did the second tank, people would be asking, why didn't you just do this all at once? And the reason for that was the 2,100 savings of truckloads and the carbon associated with those is also part of this. And I do have a great deal of trust in staff that they have made this recommendation in thoroughness and in logic. And we appreciate your support on that. And we also appreciate the public process and the fact that people are willing to speak up, even if they disagree with us. And so, we appreciate that as well. But thanks for the opportunity to contribute.
All right. Thank you. So, now we're going to shift gears a little bit to agenda item number four. We're moving into board action items and approval of consent calendar A. Oh, yes, Frank.
Yes, President Schlossberg, we would actually like to remove the, what is it? Contract number two, the Burns and McDonald Engineering Company contract. There's some negotiating specifics that have come out that we will bring that back likely next month. We remove that.
I'd like to remove item three from consent calendar A for just a quick discussion.
I move to approve consent calendar A, last item two and item three.
Second?
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Great. That passed. Before we discuss those items, we're going to move on to consent calendar B. Anybody have anything to say about those?
I move to approve consent calendar B.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 That was approved. And now, we go to the, the item that was removed from the calendar A.
Yeah, I guess Rod's going to answer my question. Sorry, but this is more about process than visitor contract, per se, because I noticed that we had three proposers, one from Portland, two from Eugene. And the criteria in background had said all the prices are competitive with people currently doing work for, for these archaeological surveys. And, but I see no award criteria for local. And I'd really like to keep, all else considered equal. I don't want to hire somebody that's local that's not qualified. But we had two proposers that were local, and they didn't get the bid. Portland got the bid. And for just the logistics of them coming down here and doing these archaeological surveys in these floodplain areas, seems to me, I just, I'm having trouble comprehending how that works in this contracting process, why we can't keep, that's a significant amount of money, and it would be good work for them. There's going to be follow-up work. Why we can't at least give some credence to the local people? And if the statement is that the firm, Portland's prices are competitive with the prices where we're working, I assume that's local. That's just my comment. Hopefully, in the contracting, we could maybe do that in the future. It's kind of like a banking thing, you know? The more money we can keep here, the better it is for everybody, all else considered equal. So, I'm going to vote to approve this, but I would just like to make that point, if I could.
What I, I guess what I hear is you're saying, as part of the selection process, have an emphasis on a local.
Yeah, as long as they don't, I mean, some people get around that by just turn around and they hang a shingle and get a business license, and they check the box. But, you know, you can check out, oh, they've been in business here. But just thinking of all the money somebody's going to spend coming from Portland to do this work, but we can have local people do it. I would hope that we can at least consider that in the future on some of these contracts.
Commissioner Brown, I'll just weigh in quickly. In an RFP process, there is usually a pretty specific scoring matrix that's developed. And I'll work with Deborah Hart and our procurement group to see how we could somehow incorporate a local preference or a local benefit to what that might look like going forward. I don't know that we have that now, do we, Deborah?
Do not. She's actually on the line and prepared to comment, if you would like that.
I would rather have her commenting.
You heard it, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. So, there is an avenue in our rules that allow us to have a local preference. But it's very limiting in that it has to be an equal offer from any suppliers or vendors that we are working with. And so, in a RFP process, there's generally some kind of distinguishing factors that lead to a selection of a firm based on the qualifications and the price. We do oftentimes include aspects of service being in a close proximity. Pricing would usually also drive for our local suppliers to be better priced for us. But oftentimes, we do include in our RFP processes some aspect of local preference, whether it's they have to be within a certain territory to be able to provide those services for us. So, so yes, there is a factor that we usually do consider to some extent in our RFP processes.
Commissioner, would you like more follow-up after?
No, I just want to get, if other people concur with that there's a way we can give them a tip, and we're trying to reduce carbon, you know, just the thought of people driving here, and whether they stay here or not, it's just the logistics. And it's the nod of I'd rather feed a local mouth than one from outside of the area. Nothing against the people from outside of the area, but I like to keep locals where we can.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Appreciate that. I'll, if you want, the motion to adopt item number three in the calendar A. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is approved. Okay. Now, we're moving into general business items. Item number seven, financial planning.
Well, President Schlossberg, commissioners, good evening. This is Frank Lawson, and joining me this evening is actually a number of people. I'll let them introduce themselves later. We have before you this evening a little bit different approach than we've done historically when it came to capital planning and financial planning. Historically, we had done a capital plan, kind of separate, although related to a long-term financial plan. We're actually presenting this. They're so, they're so integrated with what we're doing. We're presenting these together, and I'll go through the flow here for you right now. Go ahead with the next slide, please. This is actually what we're up to this evening. There are a number of different steps. What we want to do initially is to really get an understanding from the board as to your priorities, and make sure that when we're developing our investment plans and our financial plans, that we understand and have a mutual understanding of the intent and the priorities going forward. We'll then, so we'll reiterate some of those and check our logic with the board. We'll then, taking that and running with some of those assumptions and priorities and direction, we will present how we think those investments would be made going forward. We will then also look at the financial outcomes of that investment plan that achieves, again, those strategic and operational objectives. And then we'll end up with, if there's anything we missed, or further direction from the board. And between each of these, we'll have some board discussions to confirm and gather input from the board, and make sure that we're on the right track. Go ahead, head with the next slide, please. As far as where this fits in the process, we're really talking about the red, I'm not sure if that's, that's not, I guess, a rectangle with, on the left side. Really, this is integrated quite specifically and directly with strategic planning. It's about guidance. That then feeds into our capital plans, our long-term financial plans. Out of that comes an annual operating budget, and the revenue forecast that will drive in, in this case, and this is the first time we've approached it this way, is a three-year cost of service analysis, and then therefore, pricing proposal. This is not a one or done. The board will get an opportunity to weigh in later on the specifics of those budgets as well as the pricing proposals. So we're talking about guidance and direction today, and then the board will have further input really throughout the fall. And eventually, we have to have an improved budget before the end of the year. Go ahead with the next slide, please. As far as strategic and operational guidance, there's a lot of words on this. That was because we knew you got these presentations ahead of time and would get a chance to go through those. There's a few things that are worth noting as to what we think we've heard from you around priorities and guidance. One is related very directly to customer rates, and that it is acceptable to present plans that have rate increases that are relatively close or indexed to inflation. In the case of our forecasts, and it depends on which forecast, you use them for how long, that tends to range somewhere between 2% and 3%. And so if we look at a 10-year compounded, that would be 23% to 33%. We're also proposing and reiterating with the board, we're not expecting to change customer care, although there is adjustments that go forward relative to what we're trying to fund with customer care. It doesn't directly index with inflation, but it's intended to really provide a certain degree of support for a certain percentage of our population. From the investment perspective, the priorities for water and electric are slightly different. On the water side, we're really focused on a couple of different things. One is the source side recommending, I think it's time to pursue the second treatment plant sometime in the mid 2020s is where that's landed in our investment plan. And also, continued investment in the importance of the McKenzie watershed, recognizing that watersheds are important to water quality. And water quality and reliability are the number one thing that we hear from customers that are important. And then also, the base level reservoir projects, which we've talked about already, and then the intertie and transmission for those parts of the system. The electric priorities are a little bit different. Electric utility is working and dealing with an aging infrastructure. There's a huge amount of infrastructure that's aging pretty much all at the same time. That was because in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, Eugene was boomtown. It was growing at tremendously fast rates, and we were putting in a lot of infrastructure. That is now aging at all the same rate, and now 50, 60 years old, and we need to upgrade it and replace it. It's not always a direct replacement, but it is replaced to be more resilient, and it is a pretty heavy financial burden to do that all at the same time. We also know that the electric and the water system both are dealing with, and you can look at all kinds of causes, but an increased both rate and magnitude of disruptive events, those are everything from wildfires to climate conditions to cyber attacks, cyber threats, there's all kinds of disruptive events that we're dealing with. And then finally, we do have, have included replacing our legacy information systems, which we talked a little bit about back in, I think it was last month actually, or, yeah, the June meeting about the importance of the operational and legacy in information systems. Next slide, please. Also, there's just a few assumptions that we're making, and we want to make sure that we're aligned on these. Some of them are very policy driven. We know that there are certain metrics that we want to continue to maintain. Some of those are driven by policy, some are driven by the fact that we do borrow money and rating agencies consider these important. We also have made some assumptions around labor cost escalation, non-labor cost escalation. And then two categories, water and electric, related to assumptions we make around consumption. When you have a over $300 million budget, the degrees of which you're adjusting consumption do matter. The water is, has been relatively immune to impacts of the COVID economy, but for the next couple of years, we are making some assumptions that the electric side has some reduced consumption of about 4% based on a, I'll call it a COVID recovery or COVID economy. And then a number of other bullet points there related to BPA pass-throughs and assumptions made around wholesale markets and other things. And so we can get much more specific if you'd like, but those are kind of the high levels. And one thing you may have noticed in the memo that you received was, in the long-term financial plan forecast, there was a whole list of assumptions that are, I just picked out a few here, but on each long-term financial plan, water and electric, there's a whole list of very specific assumptions down at the bottom of each of those attachments. And so trying to get those out where you can, where you can see them, and I picked the ones I thought were probably most impactful here. Go ahead with the next slide. That brings us to board discussion number one, which is to get your feedback on whether you think these objectives are in alignment with your thinking, and therefore, you would concur, or if you would offer to amend either the strategic operational guidance or the business or economic assumptions going forward. And so this is your opportunity to say, yep, we agree with this, these are the things we want to accomplish, or no, we'd like to see something else. So that brings us to discussion number one.
Sean Brown.
I hate going first, but I'll do it anyhow. So the 2% inflation, I mean, that's five. And I don't, no, I mean, I'm not an economist or anything, but I don't see anything that would tell me that it's going to be 2%. I know a lot of the people that are projecting in the next three to five and 10 years in leases and things, when they have CPI adjustments, are putting a floor and a ceiling on it. It certainly isn't forward at 2, it's more like 3, and it's capped at about 6 or 7. So I'm just wondering if you're comfortable with that, given what you've seen happen in the first six months of this year?
Yeah, I'll make a couple comments, and then I'll actually let some of our finance staff weigh into this as well. So the one thing is, this 2% represents, it does represent a long-term escalation. I think during any particular year or two, we will probably see either upward pressure on that, or maybe even dampening pressure on that in any particular year or two. We also, it's a little bit of a conservative assumption. Part of that is we recognize that we can make some adjustments through the levels of investment, moving things around, for example, from a high inflation year to a maybe potentially low inflation year. And so I think we felt fairly comfortable with the 2%, but if we're not, now would be the time for the financial people to weigh in on your comfort with the 2%.
Yeah, we did look at some external sources, and you're right, it was probably the lower end of the range that we saw, where things in state forecasts that were in the like 2% to 2.5% range out for the next few years. So I think just kind of based on organizational priorities around containing costs and trying to manage on the lower end, I think that was probably, I mean, it's the lower end. And that's kind of accompanied with the trying to maintain a trajectory tied to inflation too, I think that's a little kind of pushing pretty.
Yeah, I see, I see that. I just wondered if, when we're projecting like that with a number like that, I have a little bit of economic differential between 2% and 3%, but I know that if I were having to pick one, and I wanted to err on the side of caution, I'd rather have it too high. So we said, wow, we inflated it a little bit high, and now we don't have to raise rates, but if it's too low, then we're going to have to have a rate adjustment that's beyond what we projected here. And that's always more difficult to follow than the lower one.
Yeah. Commissioner, I would say where your dial comes into play, I guess, where you can actually make adjustments, there's a couple of them. One, I'll just mention from the investment side, is a pretty significant part of our investment plans are this risk-based investment. We can turn the dial around some if it ends up being more than 3%. And we're very, we are very sensitive in this plan to the impact on rates. We could look at where we are with those investments and make some adjustments across years. If we do start to see repetitive, long-term, greater than 2%, I think there is the opportunity to go back and revisit and make some adjustments.
I did want to clarify that that 2% is out, what is in our construction cost, inflation, or assumptions?
It's not your construction cost, because construction costs are up 30%.
Right, we don't have 30%.
Reality is, if you go, right now, is that construction costs are up 30% in the last year, and it's just killing a lot of deals. And I just, you know, how much of this is construction, a lot of them. And I just want to make sure that your finger's on that pulse. I don't know what it's going to do, but I know it's a whole lot more than 2. So just, but if construction and labor are external to these projections, and you guys are comfortable too, okay, but.
Yeah, and I'll just make a commitment for the finance staff. We can, we can look at a couple of scenarios where we can just check the sensitivity to that number. I think that's probably a reasonable thing.
Thank you.
And one other big chunk of costs that is separate is all the purchase power costs, which are, we have a lot of contracted costs for purchase power that are outside the 2%. So those are just based on the long-term contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Oh, that's okay. Kind of a quick follow up to that. In the economic assumption, the other labor cost escalation, that, the percentage isn't listed there, but I'm assuming that's not 2%, that that's some other rate that also encompasses healthcare costs and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner Carlson. The labor escalator is a fully loaded labor escalator, and it's something that we try to index to both inflation, which are the items you mentioned, and also to our comparators in the marketplace. So, you know, those can have an impact as well. And so we didn't list actually a specific number, but if you'd like, I can give you more details as to what that looks like.
She's frozen.
All right, Sonia, you are frozen. We're waiting for Sonia to come back online. Any other commissioners?
Sure, I'm okay. So, or decision one, do you concur with, or how would you amend the strategic and operational guidelines? I guess for me, I would like, I probably would like to learn more about the Willamette facility, because that was something that was discussed before I became a board member. It was vetted, and then it was put on hold for, it's been what, four or five years now? And my recollection back in the day, it was going to be a $70 million project. Now I'm seeing it's pushing close to $90 million. So, not that I don't concur with it, but I would probably like to go back and see what the, what the issues with that were. I mean, I know that just from a, just from a, a layman's persons that goes and puts his toe in the Willamette, goes and puts his toe in the Mackenzies, it's different water, right? And so, you know, just being able to know more about that project, I understand that it's an important part to our, to our resiliency at moving forward. And I, again, it's kind of going back to what we just went through with the water storage tanks. How much do we trust our staff, that the decisions are made that are right? In this particular instance, I don't have enough information about that project to say, yes, it's right or wrong. I'm not saying that I want to pull it, but I know that I have to do more studying on that before I agree to spend $90 million on it. So that is bullet point number one. You know, business and economic forecast is a long-term financial plan. You know, we're talking 10 years out. If you can tell me what's going to happen 10 years from now, as far as the CPI or all of that kind of stuff, you wouldn't be sitting in this boardroom right now, you'd be sitting at an island in the Caribbean with a margarita and a drink. So I trust where we're going with it. I think that there's factors that can help us hedge the curves. I would hope so. You know, I think that the rate stabilization fund is something that, you know, if we get a year that just hits us off the chart, you know, maybe we can dip into that reserve to help, you know, take the curve off of a rate increase so that we're not going, having to go to a 6% or 7% rate increase in a specific year. That's what I am hoping that that fund is there for. Or if not, that we can come up with reserves that can help us lock these major curves. So I'm okay with the business and economic forecast. I kind of am with Commissioner Brown, if it was to go to 3%, I could live with that. But I feel comfortable moving forward, but also wanting to get more information.
And we'll, the finance staff later on will give you some of the specific financial impacts, and we can really, in pretty short order, discuss some of the scoping and some of the history associated with the second treatment plan. It is not the McKenzie, but it's also not the Detroit River. And there are times when you need water, and we were about 1,000 feet away from having to evacuate the Hayden Bridge facility last September. It was put off for some good reasons. We will give you that history in one of the upcoming months so that you understand more about that project, and why also, we did choose to delay it. Not eliminate it, but postpone it, there were some good reasons for that, some associated with land use and other things, and we'd be happy to update the board on that. And also discuss the scope of the project with the board and where you would like it to go.
And then lastly is just, I don't know which bullet point it's going to come under, but, you know, we've also got the Leeburg, Alderville, that's kind of just dangling out there in the ether. And at some point, I want that to be brought into at least some sort of plan that we can look at going forward.
Right. And Rod will talk a little bit about the near-term view of that, and then we can also talk about the expanded view going forward.
Thank you.
Before I go over to Matt, Sonia, do you want to finish your turn? Because you are now.
Thank you. I don't know, something happened with it. Yeah, so one other quick question about the assumptions under the electric specific section. The wholesale forward market, $44 per megawatt hour, that affects our revenue, correct? Or is that a cost to us, that assumption?
Presently, Commissioner Carlson, that does affect our, the wholesale market has a favorable impact on our revenue. As you know, there are times when we are both buying and selling, but on and selling, but on a yearly average, we are a net seller. And so that $44, if the $44 went to $84, that would actually be favorable to have favorable impacts for U.S. So at this particular point in time, it is a favorable, well, it is set to be kind of a midpoint, not extravagantly high or low. So it's basically based on projections that we actually know the near-term five years pretty well because we hedge out that far. But you're correct, it has a favorable impact typically on revenue.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure, typically on those, I, you know, obviously I trust staff's opinion. They, they understand, you know, where to place it. I would just err on the side of, you know, maybe not the midpoint, but even more conservative on that side, you know, bumping that price down in that assumption just to make sure because things are so volatile, you know, in general and what we're dealing with, that just having a little bit more buffer there is typically to our benefit. And then last point that I wanted to make was actually related to what John Borowski was talking about. The 90 million stuck out to me when I was reading the materials, because I recalled that it was 70 million. So I'm definitely looking for some feedback as to what that increase is and what we can do about it. Is it the current market, the current construction situation? Or are there other factors in play now that would have already put us in that that we didn't see four years ago? So, looking forward to more of that discussion as well. Thank you.
All right. Matt?
Thanks. First, I appreciate the approach to the strategic planning and budgeting process. It makes all kinds of sense to me. It's a little bit squishy, but I'll get more comfortable moving along. And I, you know, I certainly trust the staff to lead us through in a way that makes sense to us and is incorporating our feedback. I would second Commissioner Brown's concern about the inflation, just that, just because it is in kind of an unimaginable spot from a year ago. And I'm hearing from both Carlson and Brown, and I feel the same way, like anything to just kind of hedge our bets a little bit, a little more conservative seems like a good move so that we're not putting ourselves in a pickle. And I know that that's your inclination as well. And so, trust that all things being equal, we'll move towards conservative assumptions that we have more flexibility, not less. Along those lines, I have a few questions about, because I don't know the sensitivity of different assumptions in here. I love the next iteration to hear more about these sensitivities, but you may have answers off the cuff too. The water use assumptions, water use dipped in, or is dipping in 2021 or assuming it's going to rebound in 2022? One of the questions is, does more water use or less water use drive up costs or put pressure on rates?
So I'll try to distinguish between water and electric. On the water side, we did not see a lot of impact from COVID. In fact, water consumption, mostly driven by weather last year, was, was actually had a very strong year from a revenue perspective. Because the marginal cost of another gallon of water is low, higher consumption financially benefits U.S., up to the point where we would have a large capital cost, which would mean, you know, it's a, it's a near-term, small marginal cost, but it could be a large capital cost if you don't manage that through good conservation and other things. So it's, we forecast that at 95%. That's how we capture some conservatism, conservatism in our forecast. So that's about a 5% revenue conservative number there.
Yeah, and I figured that was the assumption, and that was my assumption as well in terms of the marginal cost of water. Are we seeing, and I understand that our water use is largely driven by weather, are we seeing a pretty hefty bump? I got to imagine right now with the heat that we're having right now, is it significant or is it kind of within, do you know the water side or do you know the electric side?
We don't have the numbers for, for last month's, but presumably it's a big strong just came out.
Yeah, I'd love to hear if it's been in 12 years, I think.
I believe both water and electric are both up because of the most recent heat waves.
Right.
Air condition, for this time of year, air conditioning loads are higher. Last time my number was 8% or so for the month, if that sounds about right. And water is significantly up as well.
We also saw a big bump very early in the season, like irrigation coming from very dry conditions.
Yeah, I just would like us to be thinking about, and I mean, I know the team is thinking about like, what, you know, if this kind of weather pattern continues, because rumor has it, how is that going to affect our budgeting over 10 years if we continue to see heat like this or drought? Does the time of annual peak electricity use affect rates?
So, not significantly at the moment. What we're seeing, so the biggest variable on the electric side is weather. It, we are still a winter peaking utility. We are seeing some indications that across the region, there's a greater pressure now in the summer. That's a regional pressure. We are seeing, you know, this year, we saw strong consumption this last month or two on the electric side. If we, so I would say if we continue to peak more and more in the summer, that's where you start to see more and more pricing pressures as well. So that could have a negative, a place of strain on margins. So, but we also see some strains during peak in the winters. So, peak conditions definitely affect the price of the wholesale market. And in oftentimes those cases, we are a consumer of the market, not necessarily a supplier to the market.
And if our peaks lessen in the winter and increase in the summer relatively, does that overall have a change on price or is it kind of comes out as?
I, I'll look at that further. My, my inclination would be that that's going to have a negative market, margin impact on us. It'd be unfavorable, partly because the resource base in the summer is getting less and less. So hydro conditions and other things are leading to more and more pricing pressure in the summer. And we've actually hedged ahead in August, for example, to compensate, actually do it more and more to try to mitigate those impacts. But that would be my, my inclination, but I can follow up a little bit more.
Yeah, and that's just one of, another one of those places where I would hope we'd be a little conservative in just assuming that we might continue to see that.
And we do, on the electric side, I will point out, the conservative conservatism comes in what we call a contribution margin risk factor. And that represents a 5% water issue, a 5% pricing issue, or a 5% consumption issue. So we, we size that and we, we conservatively estimate our wholesale revenue, which is where we capture that. So we do look at pricing and also, you know, water levels as well, because those impact our margins.
Yeah, I appreciate the conservative assumptions all around. It certainly brings me confidence as we're having the conversation. And I figured, and I know you lean that way anyway, it's helpful. All right, three more questions. I'm sorry for taking so much time here. I'm curious about reliability or outage measurements or assumptions. Are those, I mean, I guess we're assuming the same reliability we have today, to maintain the same level of reliability without shifting those around?
Yeah, Mr. Price and Mr. Wally and Mr. Tyler will talk a little bit more about that. The, the assumption is that we need to make investments to maintain our reliability on the electric side. And there are some investments on the water side to reduce breaks per mile and those kinds of things. So probably some improvements on the water side and maintain on the electric side.
Right. And then what about assumptions in terms of carbon intensity of our electricity? I know there's some requests, for example, to go to 100%, you know, renewable over some relatively short period of time, perhaps this 10-year window. It's super useful to me to understand what kind of price implications I would have on our rates. But I do wonder what our assumption is. Do we assume that the carbon intensity of our electricity remains the same or gets reduced? Or do we have assumptions about the carbon intensity?
Yeah, that's a great question. And it's one that's, that's not fully answered at the moment. We've made assumptions around what we know for contracts and the expiring of existing resources. So from that perspective, it would, I would estimate it remains the same, which is, which is actually very good. The integrated resource plan that we will be working on over the next year and a half or so, will identify if there's different areas of investment that we, we need to make relative to those generating resources and potentially improving on, on what we have right now. That information is not included yet in the long-term financial plan, simply because we have, we need one plan to feed the other plan there. So, but at this point, I would just estimate it is going to remain the same.
And then what about our assumptions in terms of electrification of currently fossil fueled energy sources?
Yeah, those, what we've done is a very small escalation. And in fact, for the most part, our plans right now assume that we're using conservation to offset growth. And so there's very little put into the plan as far as increased revenue, for example, from or cost for that matter, depending on if our system, what the impacts on our system is. So it's, it's pretty neutral to that right now.
And when we have the electrification study that's coming out, we're going to draft in August, will that suggest kind of the implications of different levels of electrification?
Yeah, it will.
And lastly, the question about our efficiency assumptions. We assume that our efficiency investments really remain what they are today or about to be?
Yeah, so it's great. That's a good question also. So if we look at some of the, in fact, the inflationary adjustment, inflation that was talked about earlier, we've actually seen some near-term escalation greater than what we, what we published. The, what we'll have to do is to use efficiencies and other things to actually maintain something that's more reasonable to inflation. Some of that is driven by our own segment in the market, but we recognize in order to really keep that pace, we're going to have to gain efficiencies throughout that. And so those are, those are really just assumed by looking at this inflationary factor and say, does that seem reasonable? Well, it's probably higher, but we're going to have to use efficiencies to achieve the assumption that we're making.
And when you say efficiencies, are we talking about energy conservation? Are we talking about other kinds of efficiencies?
I was talking about internal operating efficiencies.
So then my other question would be around conservation. Are our conservation investments, do we assume that rates are pretty well the same?
We are at this point. I think what we'll find over time is that those investments, the payback on those investments, including for customers, whether you start to include carbon pricing and other things, will start to shift. We have not put those assumptions in yet.
All right. Thank you all for your questions and questions. And thanks for feeling what I feel.
One, just to build on something that Matt was asking about before, about weather and peak, how that all affects our planning, our assumptions. And I'm just wondering if in my future iterations, if somehow that could be made a little bit more transparent, how we're thinking. I know the folks that are hedging are the people that are doing all the financial planning. They really think about weather, and I know that it's in the forefront of their minds. But I'm just curious, a little bit more curious about the, financially, how is the changing weather affecting us? Or I know you're saying that we're not really summer peaking, maybe because a lot of people don't have air conditioning units yet, but that will change and demand will change. So anyway, if in the future, we can just have some more of those assumptions be a little bit just more obvious for me personally.
Yes, President Schlossberg, the assumption now is that the trends we're seeing now just continue. If we want to do additional modeling, which it sounds like you're asking for some additional, look at some different ways of looking at the impacts of consumption patterns, I will call those, whether those are summer or winter, peak-related or off-peak-related. We actually have to do that, again, as part of the integrated resource plan, because part of the purpose of that plan is to understand the value of things like conservation and load shifting, for example, or peak shaving. We don't know those values yet until we run some of these models and can figure out, because we don't know exactly how much we want to invest in it through new products and time of use and these types of things. That's going to be an important outcome of the integrated resource plan. One of the resources is the customer in. And that's the part that we need to figure out the value so that we can price our products appropriately going forward. So that's, all of these are very timely questions that are, hopefully, will, we will shed more and more light on over the next year or two, year and a half or so.
Okay, just one more question. So, so when Matt was talking about leaning towards the conservative side, if we lean towards the conservative side on these, is this an economic forecast? What that means to me is that basically rates are going to have to go up to, to compensate for that, for that, being conservative on our, on our guesses, right? Because there's only one place, if, if we're saying, go conservative on this, go conservative on this, go conservative on this, we've got to come up with that money somewhere. And that means the rate increase is going to be high. So it's, it's, it's easy to say lean towards the conservative side, but what that means is, in a, in a long-term financial forecast, rates would go up. Is that correct? Am I, am I reading that right?
You are correct. I would, I would characterize the request to be conservative a little bit differently. And that's, I think, one of the things we strive to do is to be financially resilient. If you are overly conservative and drive your rates up and your assumptions don't live up to that conservatism, in essence, your customers are overpaying for the services they're getting in the moment, right, in the year by year. You do want to look at this, and we do try to look at this over a period of time. We know that for rate trajectories and other things, we want to make sure we're making reasonable assumptions and we have financial resiliency built in for those cases when you have the need to adjust. But you're absolutely correct. If you're overconservative, then your customers in any particular year might be overpaying. If you underdo that, then you're starting to draw on reserves which previous customers have paid for. So there's a, there's a balance there.
And, okay, that's good. So that's why we want to, we want to get it as close as we can. Because I don't want to be, like I said, I don't want to be taking too much from the people who've paid before, but yet I don't want to burden the people going forward just to build up my reserves.
Right. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and when I said conservatism, at least the way I was meaning it was less about building up reserves and more about trying to maintain some level of flexibility and not putting ourselves in a position where we're forced to raise rates when we're not expected to.
Understood?
I understood, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, kind of bring that clarification to it.
Yeah, thank you. That, that is a very relevant point.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we have a five-minute break. So we will come back at 7:55. All right. We are back. And we are on agenda item number nine, financial planning, part two.
So, good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Rod Price. I'm the assistant general manager. And tonight with me is Wally McCullough, our water engineering supervisor, and Tyler Nice, our electric committee manager. And we're going to give you all the good details on all the stuff we're doing in the capital, proposed capital plan. I just wanted to point out a couple of things here. The goal of our, our capital plan, proposed plan, is to basically safely meet U.S. strategic plan. You know, at the heart of it's completing our compulsory work and maintaining our reliability, while at the same time, working on our resiliency. So, next slide, please. How are we going about maintaining reliability? Well, part of it's replacing old stuff. Frank talked about the bubble and some of the stuff installed long before I was born, probably. But we have many systems that are what I would call near the end of life. I'm not going to say the end of life because that would mean they're not working. But they are near the end of life, meaning they are closer to failing in the likelihood of things failing. And it's not just the electric or whatever. There's our IT work. So when you think about age of systems, it's all relative, right? The IT systems are 20 years old and they're ancient. And so, modernizing is another way. Finding new ways to increase efficiency, expand capabilities, use... Finding new ways to increase efficiency, expand capabilities, using technology to, to help us get better stuff, right? Another key thing is to balance with O&amp;M. So we, we're doing a lot more planning and asset management, trying to line up our, our capital investments with the ideas of reducing maintenance, for one, as just an example. But standardizing, consolidating for spare parts, a lot of those techniques are really what we're after. Next slide, please. Increasing resiliency. So how do we increase resiliency? A big piece of it's hardening our system, making it more resilient and, and I think Frank mentioned, the increasing frequency of disturbing events or however you phrase it, right? There's a lot of stuff that's coming our way, earthquakes and fires and so forth. So how do we, we make our system harder? And so Wally and Tyler will, will give you some examples of that, so we'll look at that. Redundancy, I think that a really important piece of hardening our system has to do with redundancy, multiple sources for our products, multiple delivery paths. And again, that's a theme in the current drawing. Another important thing is creating flexibility. And so what we want to do is have operational systems that support, you know, our future things coming along, and sometimes we don't even know what those are, but we've, we've talked about climate change, there was a lot of discussion about climate change. What does that mean? Do we have capacity to supply electricity and water when it gets hotter and when we don't think it's going to get hotter? So those are some really important components that we're working on to in the capital plan. I mentioned a lot of flexibility to the business systems that go along with that. So it's not just hardware, it's the ability to work with our customers to use these systems as well. So, next slide, please. This slide might look like an ad for a new truck to my wife, but it's not quite that. So this is really a nod to, for those of you that remember Richard Jeffrey, it's kind of a nod to my old colleague that just retired here. He used to talk about the electric system as a Cadillac system, albeit a '59 Cadillac, right? So I, I think you kind of get the gist here. Our, our strategic investments are going to take us from an older Cadillac to a newer modern vehicle, which is full of more features, four-wheel drive, you name it, but more secure and hopefully a lot more reliable, or at least maintaining that reliability, but will give us features and things that we can work. What's not really covered in this analogy is, is the idea of capacity. One of the reasons it was called the Cadillac is maybe we were over, overbuilt or some things like that, both in water and electric. And so one of the things that, and both Wally and Tyler, again, will address this a little bit, so listen for that, how we're going to take our system and right-size it for, for the future, so we're not overbuilt necessarily, we're right-built, so we have reserves that we need to cover the future and minimize our, make our investments efficient. Next slide, please. Couple of the big items that, that are not included, basically our, the capital plan includes telecommunications work that, to rebuild and, and support our existing infrastructure, fire, radio, microwave, that's for our own operations and for the public safety networks that we, we support. There's a couple of projects I listed there, McKenzie River recovery work and the wildfire litigation. So those are examples of things that are, ideas that are forming, that we just haven't brought to the board and to the table yet and are not fully scoped enough yet to get into the, the capital planning portion yet. I forget who asked, somebody asked about Leaper, me, John? So in the, the capital plan is some money set aside for mitigation of the current situation where work has asked us to have the canal off until some of the current situation's fixed. There isn't any money in there for the next phase of that, whatever it is. And so there are also some other emergent dam safety issues. I mentioned the dirt's old when it gets down to it, so we are seeing more and more emergent situations in the dam safety world, which are concerned. What's included in the plan, I'm just going to turn it over to Wally to let him talk about the water, Tyler's going to follow.
Next slide. Yeah, so I'm just going to, Wally McCullough, Water Engineering Supervisor, and run through the 10-year water capital CIP and kind of what's included and what we're getting from it. It's kind of the summary of what was included in the background, you know, it's a 10-year total, a little over $300 million, pretty much evenly split between the first and the second five years, a little bit heavier on the first five. You know, about half of the plan is compulsory and strategic, and about half is based on risk-based work, and I'll probably talk a little more about that and some of the more discrete projects that are, the number of projects in total, risk-based, those are all based out of our water master plan, which we redo every 10 years, it's a state-mandated plan. And kind of reliability, resiliency is really the focus of all that risk-based work as well as our strategic work. Next slide. Jumping into compulsory work, you know, this isn't the exciting stuff, not for engineers or, or something, for several people. It's the, you know, it's all the stuff you have to do. It's, you know, it's the new services, when customers call in, they need new meter, whatever. It's our E-Web costs for new development, subdivisions. It's taking care of the things that break, you know, it could be a piece of HVAC equipment, a big pump, a myriad of chemical feed equipment, it's all of that. All of those type of costs, really, the expenditures in the capital plan are based on kind of trends, history of trends, you know, we can't be, we don't know what services work is going to be or what failed equipment is, but we have a good record of what's kind of typical for what's coming up. And a good example is our new services. There's, the capital plan includes about a million and a half dollars per year for new customer services. And every few years, we'll adjust that up based on what it's doing in the past, what we think it's looking like in the future. And that's one reason we come back next year, and we, we may have a $1.6 million or a 1.4 or something, because it's just kind of looking at those trends on, on some of that work. The total 10-year investment in the, for compulsory work, we categorize, it categorizes compulsory, around $54 million. And it's categorized as compulsory, some of the projects I'll talk about later are also considered compulsory. For instance, the first reservoir at East 40th Avenue is in a compulsory line category because that's the minimum amount needed to take College Hill out of service. You know, the benefits of our compulsory work is really just doing what we need to do to stay in business and meeting the needs of our customers. So it's kind of the bare minimum. Next slide. Moving on to strategic work, you know, the plan is AMI, you're all familiar with AMI, it's the last two years of AMI implementation on the water side is included in the plan for 2022, 2023. And that's the biggest item by far in our strategic work is our second source plant. Well, did you mention, John, I think, I mentioned the $70 million versus the $90 million, it's the same plant, the $70 million was the 2014, 2015 cost, the $90 million is the inflated cost to the estimated time of construction from between 2025 and 2027. So it's just an inflationary factor that is the difference there. It's the same plant. It's a water treatment plant on the Willamette, it's a robust treatment plant to meet our minimum demands, it's robust in its treatment capabilities, can handle algal toxins or pretty much whatever you throw at it, and it's seismic resiliency. It'll be designed to, you know, be back in operation following a seismic event within a day or two. The capital plan has this starting in, at least late next year as far as design and permitting, with heavy construction starting in 2025, lasting three years. You know, the benefits are, you know, increased resilience for our water resource, resource security, kind of read through that. One thing I want to mention is, it's, I'm really apparent to some, it really also gives us operational flexibility, our Hayden Bridge operation. And we spent the last decade, you know, upgrading our Hayden Bridge plant with all sorts of redundancy, you know, we can take out pretty much whole half, big parts of that plant and still produce water to some level, but there's still some components that were really having one source. An example is our 15 million gallon, 15 million gallon reservoir that we have at the plant or pump station. We built that reservoir in 2003, it's never been drained. We can't take it out of service, we don't have the time to take it out of service, re-corinate it and all that, get it back in service without an additional source of water. So we're making do with diving inspections of it and the best we can, but having a second source gets a lot of operational flexibility, especially when Hayden Bridge ages more, you get more options for crew efficiencies and maintenance. And next slide. Flipping to our kind of risk-based work, the first item is our main replacements, and what you're seeing in the plan is an increase in investments, almost doubling, our annual expenditures increasing from about $4 million to $7.5 million over the 10-year period, the total investment just under $60 million. Reason we're doing this is, you, you see a quarterly report every year, which I'm sure everybody's really excited about reading, it's like fifty pages long, and has a lot of benchmarks and KPIs in there. And the table on the left, this is one KPI we look at our benchmark, we look at, and it's the leaks and breaks for 100 miles a pipe. And we've been watching this for a while, and our E-Web tier average, actually, over the last five years, we've exceeded the average, kind of our benchmark guide for leaks and breaks for 100 miles a pipe. Given that, we're kind of doing a ramp-up. It's not a sudden increase, but we're doing a slow ramp-up in our main replacement investments to drive down that number, to maintain our reliability numbers with respect to main breaks. I think there's a lot of other benefits, you know, reliability, but it's also resource, resource sustainability, you know, taking care of the water you have, not letting it leak out, reduction, also main breaks, nothing happening in the neighborhood or in the street in front of your house, so it's all, all good there. Next slide, please. I'll flip to the next item, the pump stations and small reservoir upgrades. This is all the work, our facilities in our South Hills. We have about 27 pump stations and 20 reservoirs in the South Hills that we maintain and continually operate to maintain reliability. In a plan, there's new pump stations, three new pump stations in the near term, and then long-term, there's funds in there to provide one new pump station every two years. We have two new reservoirs in the plan, an upgrade of the Shasta 800 reservoir, and also a replacement, it's not just an upgrade, but a replacement of our existing supervisory control and data acquisition system, our SCADA system, that's currently in the process, and we're hoping to implement that in the next couple of years, actually. The total 10-year investment's around $16 million for our kind of South Hills facility. Benefits, a lot of modernization, they're all older facilities, a lot of these pump stations were built by development as it happened over the last 30 years and then left. So we're kind of, a lot of modernization of communications and controls and enhancing the reliability, adding backup power where, where it's appropriate, in building a lot of O&amp;M facilities. Next slide. Can we jump into our large base-level reservoirs? This is what, well, we've already talked about this, but the, such the public input today, but it's really the capital plans, the implementation of our distributed storage approach from our master plan. Those were on, who were on the board back in 2015, I talked about that a lot back, back in the day, and we're getting to the point of implementing it. In the plan, we have two tanks at East 40th, and originally in the, in the plan, we've talked about this, there was one tank now, one tank eight years out or so, and through the TBL and spot of work, shifted those together. So right now, there's two tanks at East 40th, followed by two tanks at Hawkins site, and then two tanks at College Hill, which is the current plan, with a total 10-year investment of just over $70 billion. Lot of storage resiliency, benefits, operational efficiencies, I think Rod mentioned and Frank mentioned with being able to take one reservoir out, going to smaller reservoirs versus the really big ones, so we can maintain them, take one out of service while not really having a big effect on our system. What we have in local, you know, it helps all local distribution sites, because these will be seismicly robust reservoirs, they'll be able to hold water during, following an earthquake, we can deliver that water, we can distribute it locally. Flip to the next slide. Last thing I want to talk about a little bit about the transmission system, our work. The figure on the right, all the red lines, is kind of our resilient spine, our Hayden Bridge plan, all the red lines are transmission systems, so that's what we're really trying to harden as part of this, part of the plan, and most of it's in pretty good shape. So in the plan, on the transmission side, we have completion of the headquarters in Nickamacher Pipeline. People here have approved contracts for the first two phases of that work. That was actually originally planned for later in the master plan in the out-years, and we brought that forward primarily due to the city acquiring the headquarters site. We wanted to get the transmission line across there before they built buildings next to it and paved it on top of it. And our second phase, we were timing ahead of a city street, a city bike path project, and so that's in construction right now, should be complete within a month or two. And the last phase, which is in the plan, is the section down Franklin, and we're, we're timing now with the city upgrade to the Franklin Boulevard. Hilliard Street, Transmission Main, this is to help feed water to and from the East 40th sites. That's in the plan, that's being coordinated with the street craving of Hilliard Street. There's a couple of sections on East 40th, and forgot to mention, on the map on the right, all the little blue lines, which, there isn't a pointer here, but those are all the new transmission systems and projects. We've got some work up at Hayden Bridge, we're replacing one of the raw water transmission mains that come up to the plant, and one section of finished water main that's been leaky lately. And some other kind of resiliency work, tie utilizing one of our old 30-inch transmission lines to get some redone across, but really it's a total 10-year investment, just over $20 million in transmission in a 10-year plan. And it's all about resiliency, redundancy, a lot of operational enhancements also on the transmission side. I'm going to turn it over to Tyler to talk about the water side.
Thank you, Wally. Lieutenant Nice, Electric Division Manager for the record, and first I wanted to say really exciting to bring this plan here. You know, when, when we look at this, it, it really speaks to what the system needs and really the vitality of maintaining that for the community, so that the light, light are there when people wake up in the morning and the community needs. And that's kind of some of the moniker here on the reliability and resiliency R squared. Really, this plan is getting both of those things, maintaining the reliability and increasing resiliency. And, you know, one of, a lot of the things Wally talked about and Rod before, about the different categories and the types of work, very transferable to electric, pulls wires instead of pipes and valves. So what I wanted to do in this, in this bit, is talk to you a little bit about, you know, our biggest fish, highest value projects, and some of the suite of work that's in there, and kind of hit some of those W's of what, what it is, why we chose it, and what, and when it's happening. So we talked about, we talked about when we go fishing, we're looking for the biggest one first. So here, as far as our indexes we're looking at, substation outages is one of our highest values to, to look at. You can see on this screen here, the Sadien You can see on this screen here, the SAD and SAFEs from last year, that sharper spike was a substation outage. There's usually 3,000 to 5,000 people go out for a couple hours while we respond and switch workout, switch, switch the outage out. And that, that can account anywhere 5% to 10% of our yearly SAFEs and SADs. And over the last 10 years, Rod shared with you in a previous presentation, that those have been increasing, so we're trying to hedge that. We can go to next slide. And so what, first part is what is in the plan. Not that you have to know what every box on here is, but you basically just have to know red bad, green good. And what we do is kind of analyze our system, we line out all the different 38 substations and look at each piece of equipment. And some of these are based on age, some on testing results, some on outage history, and we rate that. And when we go through that, then we would also look at system and customer impact. Some of these might be a really high impact to a customer base, or a lot of customers, or it might be really high impact to stability of the system or, or power production. And then we go through and we prioritize those based on those factors, and then see how much we can shove in the plan to hit our funding constraints, and then see where we sit risk-wise. That's what we've done here. And you can go to next slide. It's kind of what's in the plan, all those red boxes, the game is to turn them to green over time. And where, this is a map of the substations that are funded in the project, in the, in the plan to get replaced over the 10-year cycle. We have 38 total, and at the end of that analysis, we find that 14 of them are going to result in the end of useful life. They've reached their maturity age and/or they're experiencing issues through testing and failures now. Twelve of them are funded, and also we have through our type 1 or individual fleets of equipment that we may replace, you know, some breakers per year or transformer per year, that all that combined comes out to be about 27% of the $456 million, $126 million worth of work. Another thing to note on this map is you can see that things are centered, there's some upriver, and, but there are centered around the center part of town, kind of like Frank and Rod were talking about before. City was built from, from the inside out, and those happen to be our oldest stations. It's also the most interconnected part of our system, that is the electric version of resilient spine that car, connects upriver and, and in town, and also some of our more vital loads in the central part of town. Go to the next slide. This graph is really showing us the when and why. And a little bit of explanation here, green is good, so these are representing commissioning dates of future substations. Size of the bubble is the amount of money relative. And then the higher it is on the scale, the more of a reliability-driven project is, more of just old equipment that needs replaced or renewed, and the lower on the scale, resiliency-driven. There's some kind of opportunity or something there. So in the first few years, and this is the first five years of the plan, and I'll always highlight a couple of the big ones in here. The first, the first year, year and a half, is really centered around scaling up internally and with our standards and contract to be able to achieve this work. This is a sizable amount of work to renew the system, and we'll have to put work in to be able to accomplish it. So that'll be both the people and contractors getting that set up, but also we'll start getting some of that smaller work. Curran is in planning stages right now in design, and that, that's centered around our largest substation by, by size and complexity. And it's really in the central heart of our resilience spine, connects with BPA, connects upriver, connects a lot of our downtown load, so that's a really important one. And it, it's an end of life. And then zooming, zooming down the line, another one to highlight is the IP station. That, that has both generation and substation work involved in it. It comes out to be about a $25 million project, all said and done. Like I said, has some power resourcing and some, and some equipment outage we're trying to avoid. And with that one, really, that, that accounts for 10%, that's one customer and one generator, but it accounts for about 10% of our, our revenue overall. And so that, that essentially, you know, not like a for-profit, but it pays itself off pretty quickly to be able to avoid that risk of outage. And then the, the part on the bottom there, responsibility mentioned, that this work does drive our age of system down within our metrics. Without this work, it would, it would get driven up or maintained out of, out of that metric that the financial folks can talk more about. We go to the next slide. Doubt comes in opportunities, you know, we're, we're not looking to restore a 59 Cadillac to its original beauty, but we're looking to, to leverage some new technology and new ways of thinking to, to create a new system for the future. Modernization, really, that's part of that. There's, there's opportunities in distribution automation to be able to, to use that flexibility in the system to switch things out quicker. AMI will provide some use of new products and services in the future. Capacity in the electric business, copper equals money, and so we have a lot of capacity in the system, that's, that's kind of what I think the feeling overbuilt comes from. But what we also have a lot of is flexibility, and we want to maintain that flexibility, but put in less transformers, basically, less copper, less money in procurement, less money in equipment, and that, that's going to be an opportunity there. And then resiliency, highlighting seismic upgrades on here, that's, that's one of many things we're shooting for, but each one of these projects over time, especially in the substations and also in other, other equipment throughout the system, will get seismically upgraded, that's one benefit out of redoing some of these. We go to the next slide. And so the next few slides really are just a, a kind of, you know, summary of some of the other things that are in the plan to give you an idea. So the type 1 programs, these are the things we're doing year in and year out, more fleet replacement through these, through these distribution systems, that's more the poles and wires, PUC maintenance, underground cable replacement plan, that's one that, that I would say is the number two leading factor in SAD and SAFE influences, is when we trip off underground cable, especially feeders, so that's one we're going to be targeting. And then the, the rest of the substation transmission controls, that's another about quarter of that $450 million to target. Next slide. Generation projects themselves is a big, big piece of work in there as well. I already talked a little bit about the IP turbine generator rebuild, that's focused on renewing the generator, turbine, and some of the controls in that facility. The Leeburg Canal mitigation, that's a placeholder right now, around $20 million that will come into focus as we make more decisions and analysis this year and next. And then Carmen Smith relicensing, that, that's an ongoing project, but these next six to seven years really is when that's going to be completed in the plan, and that's another $73 million. So all that, another roughly quarter of the plan. And the next slide is more on the support and shared projects, really important to the backbone of us doing our work period, and all this is required to get it done. So as mentioned earlier, the ERP, and I know you saw the presentation from Travis a few board meetings ago about that, that's earmarked for around $23 million, and that's going to ensure we can keep up with our customers and what their expectations are, and also just maintain our business processes. Buildings and land, we do have some plans, both expansion of our operations here and providing some resiliency for our operations and continuity, but also upgrading this, this building to current seismic code as well, that's another $10 million. And the last bullet there is really smaller on the, on the end of the scale of money, but, but really high value and really needed, and that's telecom, fiber, radio, all those things that we're going to be putting in that are modernized, are going to need communication to, to work. And so that's, that's an important part of the plan as well. So with that, again, really excited to share this with you, think it's really needed to keep the reliability and prepare for the future, so appreciate that. And with that, I'll pass it back to, I guess it's to board discussion time, so back to Frank.
So I'll let actually Rod mitigate this particular section, I will, just a couple of clarifications that I, I heard. The benchmarks we use on the water side come from AWWA, which is the American Waterworks Association, and then on the electric side, we use APPA, which is American Public Power Association. So we also have our own standards, but we do use industry benchmarks. And then, you know, the Curran substation that was mentioned, which is really kind of a near-term, pretty hefty project, that's the substation that's located on I-105 and I-5, kind of that, that corner just to the north of Ochs Stadium, that you can see from I-105. It's a, it's named for Mr. Curran, who built it a long time ago, I suppose. But anyway, just a couple of clarifications in there. Rod can, I guess, work with you, President Schlossberg, to see whether the comments and questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Anybody who would like to go ahead and jump in, Sonia?
I would like to go back to slide 24. That one, yes. So in light of the recent conversations that we just had in the testimony that were heard tonight, I find it curious, so I'm hoping that you can help me understand this graph a little bit. It looks like the blue line has how much capacity we have. And it looks like there's about 15, I guess the, the level, the units are not labeled here, but 15 units that is associated with what we're building at the reservoir. And essentially, 15 units of what we would be decommissioning for College Hill.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay, so if I take that down 15, I see we're at about 55, whereas our need is only about 48. And I'm just curious if you can talk to me about the, that need right there, because, you know, we've been analyzing, and I just want to, you know, triple check that we can't build it at College Hill. And why? Because this diagram is different, it paints a slightly different picture than what we've been told and analyzed.
Yeah, I could see that. I would say that the red line is our minimum demand, and it's really the comfort factor of where you want to be as far as how close to that red line you want to get. And it's all about kind of building out into the future trajectory. We do drop below the red line in, in the future, but we have a decision point that's kind of not shown here, and when, and that's a decommissioning of our Santa Clara reservoir, and whether we actually decommission that, or we have replacement storage built somewhere else ahead of that time, so.
So this, so this red line, when you say storage required, what is that number based off of?
It's the minimum storage required to provide, just strictly a number based on minimum operational storage, fire flow storage, and yeah, basically those two components, operational capacity and fire flow, and emergency storage.
Commissioner Carlson, I would also weigh in that, that based on Commissioner McCray's comment earlier, we are starting to see peak demands within the system also increasing. And if I'm correct, this, this was based on one of the former master plans.
Right.
For example, last weekend, we saw a single day consumption in Eugene of over 50 million gallons in one day. And you're, the, the units on the left, that, that's, that's basically one day of storage that we have in the system. And so I, I actually, you know, while I says this is minimum, but I also see this pushing, having upward pressure to it.
Okay. It would be helpful to know what the variance is when these kinds of diagrams are put out there, because I can guarantee people are going to be looking and analyzing this very closely, especially in light of, you know, recent conversations. And if somebody else sees this, they're going to have the same conversation, the same comment and questions that I had. So understanding what the variance is, it's really hard in anything that we do, because there's variance, right? I mean, there's, there's not a one-line graph or anything. There's, there's always a minimum and a maximum, and kind of the range of demand. So this, this gives me pause, I would also say that, you know, we definitely need to look out at this, you know, this outer timeframe here where it dips below. So I'm glad to hear that there's, you know, a decision point that we're going to be looking It does seem like there's, that takes some time. So I'm curious when that decision point comes up, because these are such large projects. I mean, this project just took us a year and a half to just, you know, make a decision point, whereas we already had the land 50 years ago. Is this something that we're going to need to buy land for, is it something that, you know, so looking out in that other horizon and when we bump up against that decision, it would be helpful to know.
Yeah, and, and that, that decision, you know, in the outer years, I mentioned, you know, a lot of the risk-based work is really based on a water master plan, which we completed in 2015. The next update we, is 2025, and so that work will really start in a couple of years, working on that water master plan, planning out the next 20 years CIP, get it done by 2025. And during that process, will be when those decisions will be made regarding storage in the future. And that takes into account a lot of things about provision Eugene, where's Eugene going to be growing, and all the growth projections and that, so.
I think so.
Commissioner Carlson, you also mentioned the, the idea about why don't we just build,
rebuild College Hill? And so part of the plan is this distributed idea, and Wally mentioned the, the problems at Hayden Bridge, they can't take it out. College Hill, I mean, it's the same kind of problem, when you get a, a tank that's so big, it's hard for the maintenance, and it's the water turnover time. So there's the water quality issue here, too, that goes on, that the distributed water system and the distributed tanks, having smaller tanks creates a lot more flexibility for the system. If you have an earthquake, we don't, who knows which part of town, pipes are going to break in, right? So the more distributed our water storage is, the better chance we have of maintaining. So that's another key component to the plan, is moving away from the big tank to the, the multiple storage tanks, and that's a really important piece of the work we're doing.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
All right. Other questions? John Brown.
So Wally, could you, so I see in here somebody's recommending a 9% increase in water rates, correct? I believe that's the.
That's correct.
Yes, okay, that's correct. So when you tag on the $3 a month increase for my water, water shed recovery, that's 10% for me. So is that 10% plus 9%? So my rates are going up 19%? I just need to understand the math, okay, all right, okay. That's going to be hard for me to swallow, but if that's what it is, that's what it is. Not for me personally, but knowing been through rate increases before, 19% is pretty big. So now Tyler, I've got a question for you. Substations replacement, I saw four in Thurston, up, up the river, and don't we only have 2,300 customers up there?
Right, if you, if you, can you go back to that slide? I don't know what number it is, but I can walk through which ones those are.
I just counted them quickly, I'm just thinking.
One of them is Walterville, it's actually more of a conversion decommissioning, if you will, putting the generator onto the distribution system instead of a transformer, getting, getting out of the 69 KV. One of those is the, the IP plant I discussed. One of them is Thurston, that's a reconfiguration, use BPAs lines instead of ours and get out of the 69 KV. Then the other one's the Hayden Bridge plant.
Okay, and.
Not, not all of them customer feeding substations, I guess.
Okay. And I'm also a Lane Electric customer, and 53% of their distribution lines are already undergrounded, and they're spending $5 million this year underground lines. As a percentage of their total budget, what are we spending on undergrounding for this, in these senior plants?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but, you know, we are doing that for residences up there getting rebuilt right now, and then we have FEMA projects that are getting funded in the South.
Yeah, I think for the South Hills, where we could do some wildfire mitigation risk, and, you know, if you haven't lived through ice or a snowstorm, you know what I mean. But do we have any plans on increasing budget to underground lines? Because I'm looking at the percentage of what Lane Electric's doing, and they got half their lines underground already, and they're spending millions more a year than we are on undergrounding. I was wondering if that's something that we need to talk about in the long-term plan.
About 50% of our lines are, are underground right now, but to do a significant amount, I mean, you're talking 50, 70 million dollars to.
Yeah, I understand the math, but I'm just thinking about ramping it up, especially in the high-risk areas in South, in South Eugene.
Absolutely, and so the wildfire mitigation planning effort, first we're working on, and we'll, we'll be coming to talk more about this, yeah.
And my last question is, I, if I outlived a building, because I was here when we built this building, and you're talking about upgrading a seismic, I thought we were already seismic 3. Are you going to change this to essential service, or you, what's the seismic upgrades to the rock? Because we just built this thing, when, when, and we haven't changed the seismic code since then.
In a nutshell, I believe the seismic for this building is set up so you can get out, but you don't get back in.
So we're going to essential service, so kind of like a police station and a hospital. Okay, I just want I just.
Back in.
Okay, yeah, so it so it functions after an earthquake rather than it's alive and so it come back in and operate. So that's what you know. Okay, I just. Essential services is a seismic upgrade that police, fire and and hospitals are built to. It's a totally different standard and buildings. They they only not only survive an earthquake, but they have to be functional. Doors still have to open, electric has to work. It's another cost. And if we're doing that great, I just didn't know that. I thought maybe we hadn't built it to the right standard. So thanks for the clarification.
That's that's what it is.
All right, thank you. That's all I got.
Well, first in it.
I'm just going to comment. We do have a project that three, four weeks ago just got approved by FEMA for for the twenty sixteen storm to do an underground conversion in the South Eugene area. So we're putting that in for the report, but that's one that's in the plan, yeah.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to know how much money we're spending a year on undergrounding, just to kind of see how we fare with other utilities. Thank you.
You know, I wasn't going to dive into seismic stuff, but Commissioner Brown opened the door. It surprises me that this building was not built to a higher seismic standard than life safety, like a little this little gobsmacked that. This most essential facility for the entire utility was built to a lower standard. I'm glad we're retrofitting it. I know retrofitting it way more expensive than building it to a higher standard on the front end. Is it possible that we propose a board, would propose a policy that any new buildings be built to that higher standard unless there's a reason to build it to a lower standard? It seems like every facility we build, ninety percent of the facilities we build should be built to that higher standard.
Can I comment to that?
Yeah, go ahead. I was going to comment, but go ahead.
I think the reason this wasn't built to seismic three to essential service standards because the facilities at the admin headquarters building were there, everything there. Nothing here was essential. This is more of an admin function and engineering rather than and and nothing like, you know, something that that an essential service. Everything has been moved over here and that when this was built, this was this was designed and constructed for six hundred and fifty people and and we're going to have this and that. And we have consolidated, constricted, and now everybody's here and we don't need the headquarters building anymore. So that's changed the the function of this. Is that not correct?
I really don't know why it wasn't built originally this this way.
Well, we locked thirty million bucks. Seventy million was the was the budget we promised and the first bid was one hundred and ten. And we had to cut off green roofs and concrete driveways and it was it was a bloodbath cutting things.
I would rather come on comment on your proposed go forward. I I don't think it's just limited to buildings. I I think we have a strategy to become more resilient. And part of that would be to apply the appropriate seismic standards to to buildings, to transformer foundations, to pump stations, to whatever. I think that's a a very good policy move going forward and and should be part of what we put into our designs and and scoping criteria. I I think that's an absolute essential. I I think looking at resiliency going forward involves those three areas that that Rod Price mentioned, which is. Gardening, which is one of one of those areas, seems like it's a natural fit. So I don't know exactly all the history, but for this building, but I think going forward and and even with this building, we look at the functionality of what we need to do and say, yeah, that's a requirement. We're gonna we're gonna have to bite the bullet and do that.
Would it be useful if that was a board adopted policy? Would that make it? I mean, then then it goes into the calculation for any time we're doing a new building. That's not something that we, right, that's baked into the cake.
Yeah, let me look at the best mechanism for that. Sometimes that can be through a policy. Sometimes, you know, we, I don't know that we actually have a resiliency policy. That might be something worth exploring in association with with our strategic plan. I mean, we have a climate change policy. Maybe we have a resiliency policy. So that's something that I'll look at.
Just to be clear, though, this building is safe. It's life safe, okay? I don't want to give the impression that it's not a safe building to.
Can I make one quick comment on that? The same point. On the resiliency point, I would also say it's not just the seismic. As we've seen in the the heat wave. We need to start looking at what kind of equipment and materials we have that are vulnerable to higher temperatures. And I don't know what what we had, but you know, when we're looking at north and they were experiencing major heat, I know that there's certain, you know, there there may be certain tolerances that were fine in the past that are no longer fine. So as we look at that resilience spine and equipment and moving forward, we need to add that into the calculation. Thank you.
All right, John Raskin.
Few things. I'll be doing the IP generation plan. When is our contract with that? I mean, I don't want to go and rewire their their generator and then have them say, we don't want to sell you power anymore. We had appen up north.
I thought it was twenty twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
So there's a couple of components to that, though, Commissioner. One is they're a very large customer. They're a very large consumer and it's not so it's not just for generation. It's also the fact that they're a very large consumer of electricity from us. The investment that we make there, and and that was part of the hesitancy a few years ago was, you know, is is IP going to remain strong and healthy and in business? And would we end up with stranded assets? We do feel like they're a healthy organization and we would also invest in a substation with standardized equipment. So that if for some reason something happened with that contract or with IP as an organization, those would not, those would be assets we could use elsewhere in the system. So that would be part of the design.
Part of that capital project was rewinding their generator, right? They stopped making black liquor and we've got a generator that we can't run, right? So.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I I just need to know if if that contract goes away in twenty twenty-four and we're rebuilding their generator in twenty twenty-five and they're not going to sell us the power. Just a little bit more. Two tanks, we just decided we were going to do two tanks at Patterson. Now we've learned from that, are we going to do two tanks simultaneously at all these sites? Because the the timeline you showed showed them spacing out.
Basically, yeah, two tanks. Same site, same time. There there is a bit of stagger at Hawkins, I think, we have to build one and then we take that. It's such a large reservoir to take out of service. We have to get the one end of service.
Just let's let's learn from our from our past experience and make sure that we have that going forward. Hilliard Street Water Main that is in conjunction with Patterson Substation, what's the time, what what date are we looking at on that?
We're timing that. We get with the city's rebuilding of Hilliard Street and I think that's in the winter of twenty-two, twenty-three. That's the next, about a year and a half from now.
So about the same time that all the dump trucks are going to be coming down that road.
Yeah, we're, we've already discovered the timing of that and.
You know, I just made a, I just made a declaration at the beginning of this meeting that that if you don't like my decisions, you can vote me out. And that looks like those trucks and that instruction is going to be happening right about the time that my reelection campaign would be starting. So make sure that that's done correctly.
The election aside, we we also want to make sure that we we don't rebuild something, have a nice new road and a few years later have to have.
I I understand that, but there there are ways to do. You know, I've been involved with with EWEB and the and the coordination with the city on these things for the last fifteen years with a a different committee that I'm on. And we've had projects that have been doing well and we've had projects that have been done not well and and ones that. So let's make sure that this one, we coordinate to it and do it as as good as we can. And then and then the last thing that I want to I want to say is, you know, you brought up the the comparison between the fifty-nine Cadillac and the and the new Ford pickup truck, okay? Well, I've got both those vehicles, right? I've got the sixty-six Toronado. I have a sixty-four Ford pickup as well and I have a newer SUV, okay? I just put a starter into the Toronado and it was sixty-six dollars. Put a starter into the SUV and it was six hundred dollars. So there's certain technologies that just because they're new doesn't mean they're better. And and in in this industry, something that was designed in nineteen-ten may work just as well as one that is designed in two thousand and twenty-one. The one in two thousand and twenty-one has a lot of bells and whistles that can break and technology that goes out of date over time. So just saying that it's a fifty-nine Cadillac doesn't necessarily mean that that is an obsolete technology.
Yeah, I did know it's not perfect, but I would argue, too, that we're having a lot of trouble finding replacement parts. It's taking a long time to get some. Providing relays, things that we can't and we're stockpiling stuff now that you can't even buy. So it holds in electrical terms, too. Stuff does break down and so, you know, I think a better question is, can you find replacement? The stuff's really not that complicated, but it's, if you if you leave it there long enough, it's going to break down. And as Commissioner Carlson pointed out, heat will kill you and we will start popping stuff, so. No, that's it. Like I said, it wasn't a perfect analogy, but it got me halfway there.
I just have one question and it's about the second source. What is the, like, what's the plan to make the plan? What is the timeline? How will we go about that process? Because I see that design permitting is starting in late twenty-twenty-two, so how will we get there?
Do you want to answer that? You want me to answer?
I can start. Well, we're currently working on a couple of fronts. We're working with the Springfield Utility Board. Whole property acquisition and and rights and easements for our transmission water pipeline. So that should be wrapped up here. There, it'll be optimistic for a month. And then.
Absolutely.
Then I think the next steps are, we still have some some land use decisions to work through with the city of Springfield. And we've had a couple of positive, I'd say, positive meetings with them so far this year. And that'll take some additional discussions with the city of Springfield, get those solidified. If they're receptive to our plans. I believe in our first two discussions with it's a different. Different city management than. So those are the next steps, I think. And then once we get that, it would be re kicking off the. We've completed a pre-limber redesign. We have an investment in there. We could do a short kind of check. Is everything, although the financial capacity is there, you know, is everything still hold on that? As far as the all the criteria for the plant, as as far as the level of service goals, you know, you really want to need to start a year, how much capacity and that. And it's a matter of starting the kind of a more design and permitting process. Those are the next steps of city Springfield and then kick off more of the confirmation of the past work and then. Getting on some next phases of design.
I would I would elaborate just a little bit. President Schlossberg, there are a number of issues that came up in in the the previous. Discussions around a second source having to do with land use issues. And we're trying to get some direction around those land use issues as Wally mentioned with the city of Springfield in particular and Springfield Utility Board as an option. Those being kind of critical path, we can simultaneously start to have discussions with the board around the scope of the project and how it would operate. And what kinds of specifications that that we would want to have for that plant simultaneously to that. We're trying to get those land use issues resolved, at least a direction and some sort of affirmative movement by the end of this year. So that we can spend quite a bit of time next year doing scoping and working with the board on what this plant is. Simultaneously, there's also a potential opportunity through infrastructure plans and other other spending that potentially might be available federally to look at some financing options. I think that's an important kind of sidebar. But at this point, we wanted to put the financial number in the plan, knowing that there's a a number of different steps over the next year and a half or so to go through.
So maybe beginning of the January-ish, we'll get more into that.
Yeah, well, between now and then, we'll definitely get into the some of the scoping. Yeah, and also gets, you know, provide the board with updates on where some of the land use issues are with the city of Springfield.
That's all that I have. Thank you very much.
And now in the final phase.
A home stretch.
This is the easy part. This is just the dollars and cents part, so I guess we'll turn it over to you, Deborah.
Thank you. Last couple of slides here for the record. Deborah Harden, the Chief Financial Officer. Adam Rue, the Fiscal Services Supervisor is here with me this evening. I'm going to let him do most of the talking. And then we also have Alicia Voorhees and then Sachdeva available on Teams for other questions. But what Adam and his team have really done is taken the strategic and operational guidance that Frank talked about at the front of this presentation, which was a little while ago. And then taken that along with the investment plans that Tyler and Wally have talked about. And they have a snapshot in time of what a ten, what our ten-year plan would look like. And we do monitor that plan continuously. And then, of course, annually, we have an opportunity to revisit with the board all of those assumptions that go into that plan. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam.
Thanks, Deborah. Thanks for the, and I will. Earlier slides touched on the constraints and assumptions driving the financial plan. I've done a couple of those and then on the slide is the results of the plan. So first of all, we talked a little bit about the two percent nonlabor cost escalation that was included. We also do have a process internally where if there's baseline or service level needs, then those things get submitted to the executive team for review. So some, an example of that might be if like fuel costs are increasing beyond the inflation level, the person managing those costs can bring those and get those approved and included in the financial plan. Something that would be like a baseline cost increase or something outside the control of the group. And that service level will be something along the lines of if we want to do additional tree trimming or something for the service enhancement of the practices. So there is a process to incorporate those. Last year, when we came up with the sales and revenue assumptions for both utilities, we used relatively conservative assumptions. Entering into the pandemic, stay-at-home orders and weren't sure what the financial impact would be. As Frank mentioned, for the water utility, we tracked pretty close to pre-pandemic levels. So we've gone back to the normal conservative or relatively conservative assumption. We we historically use ninety-five percent of the five-year average for the water utility for sales and revenue forecast. And that's really where we hold all the conservatism and everything else. We try to just use our best guess and add cost. I needed to also highlight that we have, although we haven't had a rate increase since two thousand and sixteen for the residential water customers and two thousand and seventeen for commercial customers. We do have projected rate increases in the plan. As mentioned earlier, twenty twenty, starting next year in two thousand and twenty-two, we have a nine percent rate increase for the next several years. Those increases support the second source treatment plan. Those also lead to a higher than rate trajectory that Frank mentioned earlier in the plan of CPI. But if you exclude the impact of that one project, we project just over thirty percent, which is within that range. So that really is driving the financial error. So that really is driving the financial area. The financial metrics are in the top part of this chart, and you can see we're within target throughout the plan. Although the second half of the plan, we do have, we do approach the debt service coverage measurement. That's largely a function of the bond influences in 2025 and 2028, assumed in the plan to fund the capital program largely, the second source treatment. The, as you'll see in a couple of slides later, when we show the bill comparison, there's a bit of headroom in the rate trajectory, potential, and this is the impact of that. That's the results for the water utility. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the electric utility also, last year, had a reduced sales and revenue assumption. We did see a reduced demand, and then we also had the loss of a large industrial customer at the beginning of the recession last year that had been announced prior to the pandemic. So the demand is reduced a bit below trend and gets back to pre-recession levels in the next couple of years. The electric utility also has not had a change in the overall revenue requirement or rate increase since 2016, but we do show price adjustments starting as soon as, later this year, actually, with the Bonneville pass-through. We, as you'll see in the rate trajectory, every other year, we have an assumed Bonneville rate increase, about 2.5% for E-Web customers. That's a function of, an assumption we use for Bonneville costs increasing every other year at 6%. The last couple of rate adjustments have been below that, and we're anticipating later this year to be below that. But whatever the rate adjustments with, that Bonneville, that we see from Bonneville is directly passed through to E-Web customers. So that's presumably will be lower than 6%, and the E-Web rate increase will be lower than 2.5%. We also have general rate increases the next several years, starting next year at 1.75 included in the financial plan. To fund the capital expenditure that was discussed earlier, we have a drawdown of the rate stabilization fund of roughly $20 million, as well as bond influences in 2023, 2026, and 2029. And this, the compound growth rate on the overall rate, rate changes are within the CPI metric mentioned earlier in the presentation. Next slide, please. So here's the bill comparator slide. It's a bit different than we've shown in the past. The electric utility is consistent with the way we typically have displayed it, and we're in the same position as the seventh lowest among our comparator, or 17 comparators on the slide. For the water utility, though, to incorporate the impact of the second source treatment plan, we projected out to 2031. So we used the trajectory without second source for E-Web and then applied CPI for the comparators to look at that relative comparison. You can see that is E-Web in the same spot we've been in recent years, is the second lowest among the comparators on the chart. And that's projected out in 2031. If you go over a few bars, there's another E-Web line that's colored by green and blue, and you can see the impact of the second source treatment plan. So with all of those rate increases projected throughout the plan to support that, you can see that has us moving from second lowest to fourth lowest among the 18 comparators. Next slide, please.
And board discussion number three. If I can hear your questions or discussion of the long-term financial plans and the associated revenue reform impacts.
All right, I'll go first. And percentage increase in water being driven, a lot of that sounded like was being driven by second source. Yep. And Frank mentioned that there may be some federal funding that might come help offset that, but that offset the 9% increase? Have we got that?
Any opportunity to secure grant or federal funding could be used to offset those increases? Yes.
$19 million of, or $20 million in rate stabilization funds. What, how much of a percentage does that, that bring then? If we throw $20 million at it, how much less do we have to raise our rates percentage-wise? I mean, is it 2% that that offsets? Is it 1.5%? Just ballparking?
Math in my head. Each percentage point of a rate increase is about 1.8 million in revenue. So we're not spending 20 million. Now that's 300,000. The 19 million is coming out of electric. But yes, you are correct. It is...
Something that could come back in a moment. That would be, that would be great if we could get that back in a moment. And then, the last thing that I just want to bring up, and it's kind of with this, and it's something that Commissioner Brown alluded to earlier about using local stuff when we can. And I don't know where this, if this is the appropriate place to bring that up, but I know that before I got on the board, there was a, there was direction to take some of our reserve monies and put it into a local bank rather than a national bank or a, or a bigger regional bank. And I'm just wondering, is there another opportunity for us to do that with some more of our reserves? And where and when would that be appropriate to bring that up and see if that's something the board would like to do? Just, just a question, throwing that out there. I just saw that, you know, we're talking about reserves here. I just, I think that that's a good thing. I've talked to, talked to the bank that we did that with, and they're super appreciative of, and have put that money to work back into our community. So if there's any opportunity for us to do more of that, I would, I would like to see that as going forward.
I think that would be a follow-up, Commissioner. There are some limits to what we can do relative to investments. You know, we'll follow up on that particular topic, on the issue of drawing down rate stabilization funds. Those, we do have board policy guidelines as to minimums for those. And as you remember, I think it was April or May, we talked about reserve balances and where those are, and so we can follow up on that as well.
And thank you, Frank. And it was some time ago that funds were actually deposited to the rate stabilization fund with the intent, by the then-board that we would use it to defer or offset future borrowings, all of course maintaining target.
Yes, John Brown.
So having raised rates once for second source and then backtracked and reduced rates because we got ahead of ourselves, I want to make sure that if we're going to propose substantial, I mean, 9% before we even talk about the water recovery is, is one of the biggest rate increases I've ever been involved with in my career. And I know how people react to that, but I want to make sure that you were very comfortable about us getting approval in Springfield. You said land use is going well, that's good to hear. Have we gotten permission for the railroad to go underneath the rail line yet? Or we started that discussion?
Not specific to that railroad.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that if we're going to raise rates, we've done it before, and then we had to roll back and give the money back, that we're okay with this, that we're confident that we're going to move forward in spending this money. Because I know that it's hard to raise rates and then roll back and then roll again. And I just want to make sure that you guys are comfortable that we're going to proceed. I know we need it, and that last delay costs us 20 million bucks at least, right? I just want to make sure that we're, stuff's done.
Right, well, there are a number of boxes we want to check before we actually say, yeah, we're going to ask for this kind of rate increase. While we're sitting here, there's a couple, that's why this process is valuable to us. These are the, these are the assumptions that we want to make. These are the projects we think are important. We recognize there are some boxes to check between now and when we actually do a budget, which is approved in December. And some of those will be around the degree of certainty associated with where we are and how comfortable is the board with the scope of this project and some other things. So there's, this is, I think I said this, this is not a one-and-done. There are other things that we need to do to make sure the board's comfortable with this.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Okay, looking at the, the water and the electric long-term financial plans, I see a lot of yellow in there where we're not meeting our debt service coverage ratios. And that, I mean, that typically means that we have challenges with borrowing, and when we have a number of these, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what it means, that, that that can get into a sticky place for us and can challenge what, how we, how we're able to borrow. Is that not correct?
That's, that's actually not correct, Commissioner Carlson. The yellow actually indicates that we are approaching, we have, we have not gone under our metric, we're just within 10% of the metric. It's just, that's why it's yellow. If you saw a red, that means we would be outside of our, our financial metric that would limit future borrowing.
Okay, so our target is above, our, our actual target is above where that danger zone is.
Yeah, we, we are achieving our targets. The yellow still means we're achieving our targets.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. And then, the, the 9% and talking about the second source, I mean, I, I still, I have some other questions there around, you know, is some of that $20 million, when this gets revisited, is that due to current inflationary changes that we've seen that, I mean, you know, anybody's crystal ball, who knows what's going to be the long-term impact? If prices are going to skyrocket and then stay there, or if they're going to have this big bubble while we're having supply chain challenges with COVID, and then at some point we get out of that? Is some of that major increase due to the current COVID situation? Or is that just kind of a long-term trend that we're seeing or different regulatory changes?
The 20 million in inflationary cost for second source was based on actual construction cost indexes from 2014, 15 to 2020, and then a 3% assumption on increase in inflation to the 25, 26, 27 timeframe.
Okay, so that is smoothed out over a longer period to not necessarily incorporate this. Okay, that, that's helpful for me to understand. You know, I mean, typically, I've been in a situation, I've been very fortunate for the last four years, you know, except for the beginning of this year, we haven't had to raise rates. We've done a lot of work internally, and I understand that that can't, we can't always do that. We're starting to see that with the red indicators of, you know, we're falling behind on some of these other investments and our infrastructure needs upgrading. But these are, these are big, big impacts year after year after year. So I just want to make sure that we are really doing the due diligence there to make sure that that, that, that is necessary. That's, that's a tough pill to swallow right there. Okay, that's it.
Sure, thanks. I'm trying to be quick. I appreciate the approach, smoothing our rate increases over several years, and we've done the buttoning effort now is to do that over several years. And I think that's helpful. And maybe I missed why we're not, haven't been able to do that on the water side, where we've had several years of new increases, and now we're probably going to do a very equal. Maybe if I didn't miss that, I'd like to hear what, what happened there, or maybe, yeah, I'd be interested. And I'll just reiterate, you know, same approach on the water side makes some kind of sense to me.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. So if you look at the water utility, and if, if you took out the second source, what we've done is we've gone multiple years without a rate increase. And projecting out, we would basically be inflating rates at the rate of inflation, which seems like it's, it's a pretty natural thing. What drives the early-year 9% are the fact that we now have a very specific strategic, very large investment that we've added in in the mid-2020. So your logic makes absolutely sense, that we would have a very smooth inflationary rate increase on the water side after multiple years of not, and it would basically run pretty consistent with inflation. The reason it is front-loaded is that that 90 million occurs in the middle of this period. And so you start to run into, you know, we've, we've tried to look and say, well, instead of 9% in the early years, what would it be if it was 5.5% of all of them instead of four? And we push up against the financial metrics in the mid-2020s when we're actually making those investments. So what you said makes absolutely sense. That makes absolute sense. What drives this a little bit differently is we now have a very large strategic project, which I think makes a lot of sense, but there's a lot of boxes to check, obviously, for the board.
And that makes sense to me as well. I, but, and we saw this expense coming at some level. I mean, it's, it's not, second source has been a special for a long time, so it's, I'm a little surprised that we didn't see that start raising rates a couple of years ago in anticipation. You know, it's kind of water under the bridge at this point. Gosh, I did not intend that to swear. But yeah, for future such expenses, I think the more we can anticipate those and try to moderate that increase. I, I think the only saving grace is that our water is so affordable right now that even a 10% increase is still crazy affordable water. But I do think we're going to, I think we better make prepared for how we're going to address this conversation in the public.
Look at the God rates at Covert and Crestwell, they're a hundred bucks right now. We're 30. We're very affordable, so.
So I think, Commissioner, you're, you're correct in the sense of how this is positioned. I think is important. A lot like we did with the, with the recovery fund around the water jet. It was a very specific purpose, I think people could understand it. I also think people will understand the importance of having the second source, especially when you have 200,000 people and probably the largest community on the West Coast with only a single source that's that vulnerable. Now, I absolutely agree. There, there have been some starts and stops with the project, and what we're recognizing now is that we really think that this is the time that, as a utility, we need to make this investment, and we have the headroom to do it. We're the lowest-priced retail water utility in the Northwest. The only one that's lower right now is Bedford, and they're mostly a wholesale version. Even after the investment, we're fourth from lowest relative to all of our comparators. So there is headroom to do this if the board wants to choose to do this, and that's really what we're presenting.
Yeah, and I certainly don't question the need or the benefit of making the decision. Thanks.
Just one quick question. I feel like I've asked this question before when we talked about some of these assumptions, but if we're going to be raising rates in both electricity and water, we have a number of customers that rely on us for financial assistance. And so are we bringing the budget back as well?
So I mentioned that kind of in the very beginning. The way that our ECC funds are developed is to target a certain set of, of customers. So it's to help with basically their fixed charges for a certain percentage of our residential customers. And so as, as that gets strained, that does become adjusted by inflation and need as we go forward. It doesn't tend to expand a lot or contract a lot just based on how those metrics are set up, but it, it does adjust. And for example, we, we moved, we moved it from 240 to 200 and...
200 to 260.
200 to 260 over the last year or so because of that sort of philosophy that we're trying to accomplish. So it will adjust. So it will adjust.
That is all that I have.
So just to be clear, one question. So we've got a big capital project in water and $70 million or $90 million capital project over the next 10 years. And that equates to 9% for the first few years. If that were on the electric side, you know, where we've got $400 million a year budget, it would probably be 1% or 2%. It's just that the revenue coming into water is so much smaller. That's why a price increase to cover a $70 million thing is 9% as opposed to... In Carmen Smith, you did have a 9% increase in electric to do Carmen, which was equivalent or higher, you know? So it's just that...
There's a scale factor to that.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have a couple of things to finish up, and then we can move on if you want me to. So next slide, please. Yeah, this is just kind of how I tried to characterize exactly what, kind of where this discussion went at the end. And that's that the water and the electric utility, to Commissioner's points, are in different positions. They're in different financial positions. They are also in different strategic positions. What we have done, based on your concurrence earlier, we have met all of those strategic, all of the strategic and operational guidance. We've coalesced on the various business assumptions with some feedback. We presented a capital investment plan totaling a little over three-quarters of a billion dollars. That actually scales pretty well when you consider that we already have $1.2 billion in service. And the replacement cost is significantly higher than the original cost. So I can, we'll go through all those numbers, but it does sort of fit within the scale of what I would consider reasonable when you're talking about that kind of asset base. And we've done this within the guidance that you also provided, which both the electric and the water utility can do this by using rate increases that roughly track with inflation. The exception to that is the very strategic second water source. We recognize there's some boxes to check and things the board will want to qualify and will want to qualify there as well. But we feel like this is a pretty good approach going forward, given that we've met all the objectives. And now we have an opportunity to evaluate, really, and get into the meat of the discussion around the second source and what that's going to mean. So that's, and you take that out, and water is within the scope that we talked about relatively close to inflation. At this point, did we miss anything? That's kind of the question. We've kind of tried to garner a mutual understanding of strategy and assumptions. We presented an investment plan, the outcomes, and we really are in a position now where we'll take your advice and go forward, start to develop budgets, pricing plans, second source plans, and some other things that, suggestions that we should. So at this point, is any other guidance or suggestions or changes that we should make?
Well, for me, we haven't ticked all the boxes because we haven't talked about Walterville. And to me, that's capital investment plan. I mean, it's 20 to $100 million. So, you know, when you said we've checked all the boxes for '21 to 2031, we haven't checked all the boxes. So we've checked a lot of the boxes, and we've done a lot of the strategic things that are important. But to say that we've checked all the boxes, I can't concur with that. And you indicated that you're going to come back to that, and we're going to have that discussion. But to say you checked all the boxes, in my mind, that's not...
I would, the counterpoint that I would make is that we have achieved the tactical response to Lieberg and Walterville through this decade. If there is a long-term investment associated with Lieberg and Walterville, it will be more than likely associated with either the deep commissioning or the relicensing of the facility, which is 2040. So I'm not actually sure when that decision would be made. The open item, which I absolutely agree with, is, are the assumptions that we've made around the tactical response to water management enough? That's the piece that I concur with you on. And there's further information, nothing included, next month. So we'll continue that conversation.
The only other thing I would ask about is just what kind of capacity we have for large unexpected expenses. You know, we have a number of really big projects that are bringing in big costs, and hopefully we see them all. But, you know, I don't know how long ago it was that somebody said, oh, geez, we've got a leak here in Walterville. And, you know, within a few years, we realized that we had this, you know, tens of millions of dollars expense. I just wonder if there are, if there are other unexpected expenses like that, what kind of condition are we in to address them? Are we here, have enough of a cushion we feel like?
I think that's it. That and Commissioner Borowski's feedback are things that we can give the board a better feel of. We also have dials that we can form within risk-based projects that we have in both water and electric. Those are necessarily not time-critical. And if you move, if you have a new lump in the oatmeal that comes over here, you can bring in and rearrange projects accordingly, as well as look at the financial tools that we have available. I think that gets to Commissioner Borowski's question over not quite understanding and checking all the boxes with things like a Lieberg and a Walterville. And then the, hey, what else can come up? And so those are the, but we speak of resiliency, we don't just speak of infrastructure. We speak of financial resiliency and workforce resiliency. I think those are valid, and we'll try to provide more context of that.
I think in both the plans, the compulsory work is about 25% of the budget. So that should give you some idea of how much there is to work with. When you have to fix something, you have to fix something. And so you always have to make those choices. But I worry about, you have no idea how much I worry about that.
I can imagine you. I'm sure there's stuff that haunts you that I don't want to know about.
Yeah. Who in this room worries about something?
I'm pretty sure Rod worries about more than most of us.
Two really good pieces of feedback. All right, so thank you.
Sonia, how to end up?
Two quick things. One, I mean, I agree with the trajectory. If we're saying we're not checking the boxes, I mean, obviously, we mentioned earlier that we want more information on kind of the secondary source and what that looks like. So if we're including that and not checking the boxes, then that piece needs to go in there too. Otherwise, the trajectory and kind of where we're going, I mean, we're going to get more of this information over time. This isn't the, this is one of many looks at this, it seems, before we actually vote on anything. So that's the other. And then the other piece I wanted to make sure is just, Lieberg is the dam that's, is the plant that has the leak. Now, together, both of those infrastructures are older and aging and, you know, provide minimal amount of power. So to that extent, Lieberg is the one that, to my mind, needs more attention, you know, in a more, in a sooner manner here. Goodness, it's 9:30. We've got, we've got to wrap this up soon. So, you know, for me, Lieberg is the main one. But anyway, that's what I have.
I'm going to, if late, I guess my only little tiny thing, and this is a process thing, is that these are really big, important decisions that we're making and the feedback that we're giving you. And this meeting is really long. So not to sound like a broken record, but I'm an advocate for work sessions or something where we can get some of the work done at a different time because I feel like by the end of the night, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I'm really tired and my brain gets kind of fried. So in the future, maybe that.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, I think I really liked the process that you had here going, you know, it's like, here's the issues that I really want direction from the board on A, B, C. And then us being able to dig into those and say, yes, this is, you're going the right path, but we want more information on this. So I was really pleased with the way that this meeting went. It was long, but I think we covered a lot of really important topics and gave staff direction to move forward. Like Sonia said, we do have more bites at the apple, but the apple has a couple bites taken out of it now, right? By giving you guys this direction, that's what I'm seeing. And, you know, we may say, well, let's cut off half of that apple and do it a little bit different and quarter it or whatever. But I really liked the way that the meeting was set up, and specific questions being asked of the board, not just, what's your feedback? Because that's difficult for me to say, here's my feedback, when I have a PowerPoint. It's like, is this right? Is this wrong? And so I appreciate the way it was put forward.
Thank you. Your actual next vote on this will be in December. So there's a number of opportunities to have further discussions, whether those are work sessions or regular sessions. There'll be a lot of opportunities. Agenda check, President Schlossberg. I know that Jason is probably in his trailer, but I will tell you that his trailer is on his office, just so you know. His information is not requiring action from the board if you wanted to wait until next month. I'm sure he would understand.
I feel bad for making him sit through the whole meeting, though, to do it again next month. Put him at the beginning of the agenda the next one.
I said, you okay?
I'm hanging tough. It's been an interesting discussion tonight. I enjoyed it. Is this like jury duty? I thought I didn't have to come back, so.
Yeah, we'll pay you accordingly.
Thanks, Jason. It sounds like you've postponed. There's a moratorium on Jason until next month. Thank you.
Sorry, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, so we are going to try to wiz through here with item number 11, correspondence and...
There was only one piece of correspondence, I think, the board, you can reach out if you have any further questions on that enterprise risk management assessment that we go through. Be happy to answer those in our one-on-ones if necessary. And then just the future board agenda is the only thing I'll mention, that we, our plan is to meet in person next month at the headquarters site. So we open to the public, although I think we will also have some virtualness to it while we're looking at that. But that's, since the governor lifted her order, it's an opportunity, and maybe even a requirement for us to now provide public access to meetings in person. That's the only thing I'll mention.
Do you want to figure out what we're going to do about how we're going to do that as we get closer to the meeting?
More to come.
Sonia.
I'm, just a quick reminder, I'm not going to be at the meeting next month, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson.
My first meeting, ugh!
Right now, yeah, that's the first one ever. I think we have in our notes that you will not be in attendance pre, excuse, absence next month. And then Commissioner Borowski will be missing the September meeting. So those are the two that we have notes on.
Unless I zoom in from Sardinia.
All right, we are at the very end with board wrap-up. Is there anyone that wants to say anything at this point?
Actually, I have a couple of questions on the agenda stuff, if I may. And I hope we'll load a whole bunch of really valuable decisions in the next month while Sonia's out. Sorry, it is late. That's all it's got. I don't, well, one, I'm excited to hear about the electrification plan. I'm excited to see that on the agenda. Also, I don't see the wildfire mitigation coming back to us. Is that something that we'll see, or will that just get wrapped up in?
We'll see that again.
Okay. It's not on here, but it will be in the next month. We'll get to my story, but I can provide us with you a draft, some more over, and then a final takeover for... Great, thank you.
And then another question I have is a little bit logistical about meetings. I know for me, being able to see these meetings, these are all recorded, right? And they are archived on the website, right? Are we planning to now make that a practice where we video-record meetings and keep them archived? Is that...
Those are things we're discussing. But it's likely that we will do something like that.
I, for one, think that'd be really valuable for people who are trying to understand our decision-making processes. I think, you know, following that pattern would be really beneficial. That's all I have. Thanks.
Back on the board wrap-up, last month, or this last month's meeting for the Lane Council of Governments, we received a report on the WICS, the underground infrastructure where we share our dark fiber. And I wanted to find out if that might be something that other commissioners were interested in getting feedback from that group and/or getting a report from ElCOG on kind of the services that they offer. Brenda is the executive director and is willing to come and kind of do a talk about that or have staff come and share some information on the WICS and the project and where it's at. I know it was a pretty significant investment that EWEB made in an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Eugene and ElCOG to help get that going. And given that we have some new board members, I wondered if that might be something that people are interested in having. Maybe not most excitement at 9:30 at night when we have all of these other topics that we're tackling and running long meetings. But if there are head nods, then I can, you know, help connect or we could help connect, get back going.
Always good to know.
I see maybe a one, maybe. Maybe not, then. Okay. I, it sounds like maybe no.
Also, anything, any updates on the, I'm interested in the hydrogen project and any kind of updates or things like that. If you could send a memo out, that would be really good. I'd like to keep in the loop on that. I think it's an exciting project and a direction that I hope we will be pursuing more in the future.
Well, thank you, everybody, for a great meeting. And it's really nice to be with you unmasked, actually. Appreciating that. So this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you for your endurance.